Okay, welcome ladies and gentlemen. We are back into our regular session. We're on Agenda Item Number Four. The time right now is 7:06, and at this time it is the walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins? Seeing none, I'd like to move on to Agenda Item Number Five. It is a discussion vote for a stop sign, Cornerstone Lane and First Parish Road intersection, and this is from the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee. If I could just ask, Al, is Officer Thompson outside? Officer Thompson, see outside? Think he's going to be presenting?
I think he might have gone across the street.
Okay.
Think we need him, John?
I don't think we do. What they're looking for, okay.
Thompson?
Sorry, I don't see him.
Okay. What they're looking to do is, that's okay. They're looking to, Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee has recommended that a stop sign be placed on the corner of Cornerstone Lane and First Parish Road. For those of you who may not know where Cornerstone Lane is, it is this first street after Ronnie Schoen's, heading towards the Town Hall. It's on the right-hand side, and they've recommended that a stop sign be placed there for people leaving and exiting Cornerstone Lane onto First Parish Road, so.
Here he is.
Officer Thompson, come on up. Just discussing the stop sign that's been recommended by the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee, and they're looking to put it on Cornerstone Lane, so that vehicles leaving Cornerstone Lane would stop and then take either left or right?
Right.
And anything you'd like to add to that?
No, it's pretty straightforward. I think it's part of the Street Acceptance Committee, too. That was, it was part of their thing, that they wanted to make sure that was there as well.
Yes, it is, actually. Yep.
Mr. Murray?
So, traffic on First Parish will not be affected?
Traffic on First Parish is not affected.
Okay.
What's there now?
I don't believe that there's anything right now.
So now you can just fly right in? Proceed at your own...
Probably want to make sure that gets on there.
All right, motion, please?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to amend the traffic rules and regulations of the Town of Situate by adding a stop sign at the intersection of Cornerstone Lane and First Parish Road as recommended by the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee.
Seconded by Mr. Harris for the discussion.
Anyone from the audience seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you, Officer. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, it's a discussion on the 375th Anniversary Celebration Committee, and on behalf of the committee right now, I think, it's Mr. Cavell, would you like to come up, please? Mr. DeCarlo, Mr. Litchfield, come on up, too. Just for purposes, and I probably should have done this, I didn't need to do it with Officer Thompson. Ed Cavell, could you just tell your address for reference?
Twenty-five Gilson Road.
Mr. Litchfield, could you also do the same, just for...
It's a two or four countryway.
Okay. And then, of course, Mr. DeCarlo, our affairs person, thank you.
Hi, Gary.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, we're going to be adding to that committee tonight, gentlemen. I know there's some other people who are on it.
Good.
Ed, so what do you have here?
Well, the, we called a meeting today to have a first organizing session, and we have more questions than answers at this stage, and felt that we needed to address the board tonight to see if we can just figure out which direction we should point the ship in. We're floating, we might have a rudder, but we don't know where we're going, so we're looking for a little bit of guidance. Specifically, we have two events that we're thinking of for the Fourth of July. One is the American Legion-sponsored celebration of Independence Day. The other is a potential for celebrating the 375th of the town and the 200th of the lighthouse. We'd like some guidance on whether or not the board would like to see the celebration of the 375th and 200th on multiple days of 2011, and we assume that you do from casual discussions we've had. If so, is Fourth of July one of the days on which you'd like to see it done? And get some kind of an idea of how big we want this to be. I've heard discussion about involving Noel Hanover Marshfield, because they were all part of Situate in the beginning, or parts of them were, at least, and that could end up being a big event. So the next question that comes on in very rapid succession is, is there any budget for it? And we think we know that answer, but hopefully we're wrong. So if you could give us a little bit of what your thinking has been on it, it would be very helpful.
I imagine combining the two.
Okay. Well, I see right here you've got a proposal for the Independence Day, and a suggestion that it would be in conjunction with the 375th, and that you just gave to us with a proposed, a tentative schedule for events for the Fourth of July. You know, I opened that up to the board for discussion. How about on that point in and of itself? Do you, did everybody understand that?
I'm not sure we can do it independently. Now, when I say that, I mean this, there is probably going to be, there's a committee being formed, and I just, we have two people we're appointing tonight, the general overall 375th Committee, who will be planning events in the course of the summer. Ed's on it, all right?
The three of us will be on it.
You'll be on that committee along with whoever, whomever...
And what we're looking at is, our Fourth of July event would be incorporated into and become a part of...
Under the umbrella of the 375th, yep.
It doesn't, I mean, the Legion celebration of the Fourth doesn't really have anything to do with us being 375 years old.
Exactly.
But it's a celebration.
And it would be a perfect time to come under the umbrella of the 3. We received a list of events, a suggested list of events, by one of the applicants that we're going to be appointing tonight, and it included a dinner, and it included a cruise, and it included some great ideas, and I don't have it with me, also to be done over the course of the summer. So I'm thinking, let's just throw this out to the board. First of all, as far as including Marshfield, Noel, et cetera, et cetera, maybe we should save that for the 400th, because I think that's a big undertaking. A big undertaking. I was part of the 350th, and we just kept it to Situate, and that was huge in itself. So what I, I guess, should we not form the committee first, or have the committee not formed first, before we deal with individual events? I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here.
One of the thoughts I had is, this, with the respect to the Independence Day, this is a work in progress regardless of the committee at this point.
Correct.
So, this is, so getting answers with respect to the Fourth, that's moving forward, and then when the committee, actually, the reason I was thinking, that's why I was tackling it first with the Independence, and then talking about the committee, because we have committee members who are going to be appointed tonight. So I think it would be, who, everybody who met earlier today on the, well, your meeting today was in reference to the Independence Day, correct?
No, actually.
Oh, was it?
I should clarify that. It was, in fact, citizens interested in helping plan the 375th.
Oh, it was.
Okay.
And there were eight people in attendance, and we were the three legionnaires that happened to be there. So the other five people were not Legion.
What might be helpful is then get the other people who are applied tonight, who are going to, you know, it's going to be a rubber stamp, because we want them on it. I think because of their credentials, it would be nice to augment the committee itself, so you get more input. But in addition, then to meet again, and then, I'd say, then come back, we'll get together, you know, I don't know, you know, come up with ideas, percolate it with a meeting or two, or three or so, and then, and then from there, you're going to need to have answers sooner than later. We all recognize that. And as far as the funding goes, we don't have any funding, although I think if we put in a request through CP...
We did. We put in a request for, I think, I don't remember the amount, I want to say 7,500, but it could be more than that. But I did meet with John Bowman, and he thought it was probably a little thin, although reading the notes that you provided, as far as the historical aspect of it, that, and Dave's suggestions, I think maybe we can attack that from another end. I mean, one of the impetuses for the CPC funds was to have funds to print a commemorative book, and if you do that and sell advertising in the book, that provides the seed money for the activities as well as additional fundraising. But I go to CPC on that request next Monday night. So, at six o'clock, I think, so, anybody wants to accompany me. But John seemed to think that it would have a better chance of being funded, to fund the book, which is a deliverable that would come out of the celebration. But, you know, if he hears more about what are the type of things you're thinking about as far as historic events, it has to have a historic component to be eligible for the CPC.
One of the things Betty Meisner brought to our attention was that the incorporation of the town actually took place in October, which makes October sound like a month we should do something in also. It was in the first week of October, it looked like the Fourth or the Fifth in the document she looked at. I would think Fourth of July, Heritage Days, Labor Day, and October sound like good times to celebrate the 375th. Planning a memorial book is not something you're going to do between now and the Fourth of July, and therefore, if it were ready for October, we'd be lucky.
Okay. Why don't, I know Mr. Murray had a question, but I was going to say, maybe then the suggestion might be, is this, reconstitute, once all the people who want to be part of it are there, met rally, ban those ideas around, and come up with, as you say, kind of like a tentative plan for various dates, and in the meantime, make sure going forward on the Independence Day, that's going to happen independently for now, but it probably will sound, it makes sense to incorporate it as maybe the initial event, since, you know, we're celebrating the, not Bicentennial, celebrating the Independence Day. So, and then from that moment, that would be the kickoff. I, you know, I think the board's certainly open to doing it. I think the question is making sure everybody's there to get what, input before we start making final determinations, or pretty much not just preliminary.
We weren't looking for final determinations tonight. We're just looking for which way is up.
I don't think it's big.
I think, and you touched on it, Mr. Chairman, I think it's important that anyone that showed interest, anyone that was there today other than you fellows, send a letter to Kim asking, we could appoint them immediately, you know, and that would, that would be good, very good.
I know we've been harping on this since November, maybe even October, but at some point, we've got to put the line in the sand and say, let's move forward. And so, if nobody, we're not going to keep waiting to April, or not April, February or March, and expect people to join. No, it's time to begin to act. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I just want to echo the ideas that you all are putting forth about getting together the committee and getting as many, you know, diverse inputs as possible, and I just wanted to chime in also on that sense, that I do think it's, I was very pleased to just scan through this, you know, right offhand, and see the diversity of ideas that you all are talking about, as well as some of those other applicants. I think our town does a very good job at Memorial Day, and I think we do a very good job last year with July Fourth and some of the other things, and I want to see, my personal feeling about the 375th series of activities is that it be something different from the Memorial Day tone, or the July Fourth tone, but also, on the other hand, it's kind of got to hit that sweet spot of combining where possible, so people don't get festivalled out. It's, you know, how many can you actually do? So I think you're on the right track, and I think when you start putting together other ideas, you're going to be really...
Is this set in stone? Can be announced at all, the keynote speaker?
None of it's set in stone.
Okay.
There's just ideas.
Just ideas. Gotcha. Good.
The Christmas list.
Like last year.
I mean, I have no trouble discussing it.
I know, I just want, I don't want to say anything unless I know, we know for certain, so I don't want to steal your thunder. All right.
The problem with the types of events we're looking at there is that a pesky war can come along that will make all of that unavailable to us.
Right. We don't want that. All right. Well, gentlemen, then, why don't we do this? Our next meeting is in February...
February 1st.
Maybe, would, maybe we have a touch base or follow-up again on February 1st? Would that be okay?
Sure. Sounds good. One question before we leave. Is there a selectman who would like to serve on the committee? It would be nice to have that kind of direction.
Absolutely.
You want executive session to beat that one out?
You're a skilled man, Ed.
You know what? I'll be happy to serve. Just let me know when you're meeting. I think you have my emails, and I'll be more than happy to participate. I think it's a great event.
And John, if you can't make a meeting or something, I'd be glad to back you up. We could do this together to help, you know, spread it around.
Perfect.
Certainly, particularly my interest in historical and liaison to those committees, I'd be very pleased to work with you.
I have no problem chairing the American Legion piece, of course. Just procedurally, how will you establish who's going to chair the larger picture of 375th?
I think, I think the committee will.
The committee will.
I think, you know, when the committee meets after everyone's been appointed, you'll meet in part of the first order of business with you to elect a chairman.
And it's not a selectman, I can tell you that.
As will I.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, it is a, I'm sorry, yes, seven, a discussion vote on a ballot question petition, and the applicant is Mr. Norman Paley. Mr. Paley, could you just identify your address for the sake of, I know it's Eli Ave, but...
Fifty.
Fifty, there it is. Okay.
Norman Paley, fifty, Eli Ave.
And again, you are looking for the board to vote your petition, I assume, to bring it to town meeting?
To the next, no, to the next annual town election.
To the ballot.
It's not going to town meeting.
And let me just read the question. You're saying that the question you'd like to be submitted to the voters of Town Situate are, "In these times of economic hardship, with our town seeing the highest unemployment levels in the past 20 years, do the voters of the Town of Situate want their government to live within its means over the next three years by passing no operational overrides that will increase taxes?" And you have, at a minimum, looks like 12 signatures, and you would like to know whether or not the board is going to support it. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Exactly. If the board supports it, it automatically goes on the ballot. It's a non-binding question, so it gives the voters of the town a chance to weigh in on the direction the town will head in these next ensuing years in this economic hardships that we're all facing. Does the board look to do business as usual? Does the board intend on increasing town government, or holding firm as to where we are? And in so doing, will they present us with overrides in order to do that? Or will the board head in a different direction and look to consolidate town government and try and, as they say in the petition, to live within its means and try and get through these times until the economy turns around?
If I can just speak first. First of all, town government has not only been living well within its means, it's actually, has not been, it's been consolidating, because we've had attrition, we've been losing positions, and if you've, which I know you have, Mr. Paley, we've been cutting our budget left and right, and so...
But this gives the...
We're not even, hold on, sir. We're not, we're not just trying to, we would love to hold firm, and frankly, I wish we could hold firm, because that's not the case. I personally, as a selectman, cannot endorse this, and I'll tell you why. Because in the event that there is a major situation, an emergency, whether it's this year, or next year, or the third year, I do not, as a selectman in my fiduciary duty to the town, want my hands tied. Now, I grant you, I understand it's a non-binding, but you know what? I can't endorse something on a non-binding situation, because I'd have to say I'm going to live up by it, which means in the next three years, I would not vote for any operational override. And I'm not saying that I'm going to support one, and I'm not saying I will, whether I'm going to support one now or not, I don't know. But I want to be put in the best position in my capacity to, to be able to evaluate the need at that point in time, and not have a non-binding, shall we say, mandate, not a mandate, just vote, to suggest I shouldn't. So I can't, and that's the reason why. So, I'll take each, each situation as it comes, and I'll vote for it, or vote against it, when it comes. And I just think that's, that's my position. Every other board member's going to have their own, but I understand where you're coming from, but I cannot do so.
And this just gives the, the voters of the town a chance to weigh in on the direction that we're going to take. Other, Mr. Norton?
Yes, yeah, I feel similar to you, Mr. Chairman, in that I would not want to, and I certainly don't foresee this, but if it ever came to the point where the residents of this town were put in an unsafe position because of lack of fire, lack of police, whatever, well, the lack of public safety, I would not be, want to have my hands tied, in that I couldn't do something to, to ensure the safety of the residents of the town. It's not going to happen, I don't foresee it happening, but I certainly cannot go along with the idea that if something like that did happen, that I'd be held to this question. And as I think John said, it's, it's non-binding, we know that, but when you, when we put something on the ballot like this, when we voted, in my mind, anyway, is binding. I would adhere to the, to the voters, and I will also have to vote against it.
So, Mr. Vignani?
Sure. You guys are being way, way too kind. This is the most outrageous thing I've ever seen in the three years that I've been here. To suggest that we would do something like this would be completely against everything that we're trying to do up here. Mr. Paley, you came before us several months ago and said that you would support an override, that you saw the need for an override. You, no, let me finish, but you just didn't want to fund it through operations. You would be happy to fund it through CPC, and you saw needs for money, needs in the town, needs in the school for things, but you just didn't want your taxes to go up. You wanted it to come from a different source. What you're doing is you're taking your personal interest, which is a coalition against taxation, and trying to push that to the forefront, as opposed to what the needs for the town actually are, whether it is for an override or not for an override, and I think it's outrageous. I mean, especially given the fact that we just went through a catastrophe. If those seawalls had been blown away, and we had to come up with $3 million to fix the seawalls, where, because we signed this piece of paper, we can't act on what we think our best interest is?
Two thousand...
I'm not done. I'm not done.
Okay. I'll give you a chance to respond.
Thank you. I think, I think for you to imply that we should put this up there and go against our complete fiduciary responsibility for this town, it's crazy. It's just crazy that anyone would sign some sort of, or agree to something like this, particularly given the fact right now that everyone in this room, everyone watching on TV knows the situation in our schools, where for the last two years, they've deteriorated. It looks like this year, they're going to deteriorate again, and that's, that's a prime issue, that I think an override question is going to come up at some point in time on it, or else we're going to see our schools continue to deteriorate, our kids not get an education, our property values go down, and everything else that can fall along with that. So, you know, to put this before us, I think, is just, is just crazy, and it's grandstanding.
May I respond?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. First of all, seawalls would be a debt exclusion override, not an operational override, so that seawalls has nothing to do with this question at all. But if you want to talk about seawalls, we can talk about the money expended, the vote without money expended in 2003, and 2005, and 2007. If the Town of Situate was that anxious to fix seawalls, they would have fixed seawalls when they were...
Mr. Paley, Mr. Paley, this is beyond, it's just, I'm letting you respond to his comments on your, on your petition. I don't want to get into seawalls, that's a whole other issue that will create more...
I don't either, because it doesn't affect this type of an over...
Mr. Chair, just one more comment.
Right.
The only other thing that I want to bring up is, the Town of Situate has the lowest tax rate in any town on the South Shore, because the Town of Situate does not pass overrides. We don't need a piece of paper here. We've got the public out there that's paying attention to what's going on. We've had one operational override passed in the last 20 years, and, or not, not many more than that, if in fact there was. And every other, other towns in the community do have overrides passed for different needs, and we don't, because the public is aware of it, and they're in tune to what's going on, and they vote whatever their needs, whatever their opinion is on it. But we don't need a piece of paper like this to, to say that we're not going to do it in the future, it's...
It's rubbish. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Norman, I'm reading through this, and I'm looking at the signatures, and I don't see your name here, signing this, this petition. Do you support this petition?
Of course I support it.
Why didn't you sign it?
What we did was, we took 12, we only needed 10 signatures.
Why didn't you sign it?
For this phase.
Sure. Why didn't you sign it?
I've, I've signed other petitions. This is, just happened to be a sheet of 12 that we had. It fit the 10 signatures that we needed. All the rest were filled with 28 signatures, and this didn't happen to be one that was a filled petition.
So these, but these signatures are all registered voters?
These signatures are all registered voters.
Are you a registered voter? Still in Situate?
I'm a registered voter.
In Situate?
Not in Situate.
But you're a registered voter in some other town, but not in Situate?
And not in Situate.
Okay. That's an interesting point, and I fully appreciate that, you know, when you're a taxpayer, you have property in here, and, you know, I'll look more forward to you. But I just was interested in that.
I pay the same taxes as everybody else.
Exactly. I'm also interested in your definition of live within its means, and I very much applaud Mr. Danahue and some of the others for pointing out some of your inflammatory rhetoric was just absolutely factually inaccurate. For example, when you say, are we going to toe the line, or whatever wording you said, and hold fast, and, and not continue to increase FTEs personnel. We've actually cut FTEs in this town. Okay? So when you come and speak before these things, and you say all these, these words that sound very good, and they're sort of, you know, cliches and so on, it's very helpful to get our facts accurate on that point. I'm also interested in what your definition of is to live within its means, and does that include situations, as one of the previous chairmen alluded to earlier, about our firefighters going out and saving people from their burning homes, and floating, and floods, and things like that? Let me finish. We can't plan for those things. We can't budget and say, hey, we're going to be, this is going to be a bad year for floods. We need all that apparatus, we need all those hardworking men and women, every single day of every single year, because we can't plan for that. I wonder if living within its means also includes situations, like if you just read in the Boston Globe this Sunday, Kevin Cafferty was featured, in fact, for some of the issues that we discussed at our last Board of Selectmen meeting, where we're saving money, tens of thousands of dollars by converting to brine as opposed to salt. I wonder if living within its means also includes situations where we had the harbor master also featured in the recent newspaper, where we had a fishing boat that had an offshore collision, and was hauled back onto the pier, and it sank, and Mr. Patterson and his men, and other people from the Coast Guard put pumps on there, and really dug that out, and helped to save that boat. It sunk at the pier, but they did everything they absolutely could underneath that. Also, as you're well aware, we have sewer betterments going on all over town, including your neighborhood. Now, that's being paid for by a betterment, but if you think that betterment is covering all the charges associated with putting in sewers, and all the time that the engineers and other personnel in this town are putting in, that's absolutely not the case. The betterment, certainly what you're paying, and several of us up here also have had sewers put in, we're paying a lot of money, and I appreciate that. No one likes to pay money at all whatsoever. But still, that comes from a lot of hardworking town employees doing this. Okay? I find this actually very disappointing. You know, I really support you when you come up and you, you raise issues, and it's always good to have a Norm Paley or two or three in a town, to raise issues, to sort of help, help put things out on that other side. But I find the hypocrisy in this actually just a total waste of our time, and I would just really hope that a person who's as dedicated a citizen as you are, in whatever town you registered to vote, I would hope that a person like you who professes to be as dedicated and as altruistic as you, would instead spend your time really trying to help us move forward in other directions. And then you also talk about, well, this is non-binding, and you just want to give the voters an opportunity to participate? Come on, Mr. Paley. You know voters have the opportunity to participate at the ballot during an override, or during a town hall meeting, and you're a very active participant, for which I applaud, applaud you for. Every citizen has that opportunity. The time to vote in on an override or not, operational, or debt exclusion, or what have you, is at that time. We don't have a crystal ball up here, as some of these other gentlemen were saying. We can't sit here and predict what's going on two years down the road, three years down the road, or four years down the road. Maybe they do in other towns. Maybe that's why you're a registered voter in that other town. Maybe they have a crystal ball there that can see the future on this. I certainly don't and neither do you. I think, even though this is non-binding, I think this is a travesty and a waste of time. And truly, I mean, you and I clearly disagree on this one. But I think also you and I agree on the need for citizen participation. But I'd like to see your efforts put into something much less grandstanding and much more helpful towards this town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It will, it would only be fair, Mr. Paley. Yes, you may.
Thank you. We keep blurring the difference between an operational override and a debt exclusion override. Equipment is a debt exclusion override. We're talking about salaries, we're talking about pensions, we're talking about healthcare costs.
Don't skip me.
We're not talking about equipment. We're not talking about seawalls. We're not talking about structure.
We're aware of overrides.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay. Mr. Harris, you have yet to have an opportunity to say something. Okay.
Are you done?
Did you want to finish? Okay.
I think everyone on this board knows the difference between debt exclusion override and operational override. Everyone said it very well and I'm just going to pick up on a couple of things Rick said and I'm going to put my two cents in and that's it. Coming from you, this is really disappointing. It's a slap in the face to all of us and especially to her. Why it's disturbing that it's coming from you is because you know better. You know how hard she works and how much she watches every single dollar that costs all the taxpayers of this town. That's what really surprises me. I know half these people on this page and I'm sure you stopped them at a place of doing business and they might not have really, they probably don't have the knowledge that you have, all right, how this town works. An operational, and I just made some quick notes here. Operational override from two years from now might be needed, it might not be needed. But let the public decide. If, if the, if the majority of the public thinks it's needed, then it's going to pass, whether we support it or not. So, like John said, and then I'm going to stop here. By, Tony, everyone said it, by putting our name on this and supporting this, like John, it's tying the hands of future selectmen and, and the people of the town. So, if it's got merit, it will pass in two and a half years and if it doesn't, it will.
Finally, because I don't want to move on. It doesn't sound like you have.
Just a final quick comment.
It doesn't sound like you have our votes, so I don't want to belabor this and I don't want you to be continually pummeled here by all of us. So, please, go right ahead and then we're moving on.
Right. We have financial forecasting. I was very instrumental in putting that forward on the charter. We don't seem to have it anymore. We had it at one point. But the idea that we don't know what's going to happen in two years because what we're doing now is taking a percentage and running it through a spreadsheet is absolutely beyond, beyond thought that we would revert back to what we did years ago where we would come before the voters and say, "Well, well, we've got an emergency here and we've got an emergency there."
Mr. Paley?
It's no longer, it's no longer going to stand anymore. You guys should know what we're facing, a year and two years and three years and all the way up to five years down the line.
If I knew that, you know what, I'd be down at the track trying to bet on it so I could make some money off it because things do change, economies change. Forecasts have to change constantly and they're not static. That's the problem we face in this world. Money is going to be told to us in a few days what we're expecting for our upcoming budget. And we have budgeted based on a very conservative approach. That too can change because the state government changes, because the federal government changes. Mr. Paley, you know that. I'd like to have a motion on this so we can move this. If there are motions to support this?
I move to reject this.
Okay. Move to reject by Mr. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Norton. All in favor? Discussion? Yes?
Just two misfacts. There is a financial forecast. There was a meeting three weeks ago where we went over the, the forecast. Tricia and Mary Havitt, I think it goes out five years. We look at it very, very, you know, carefully. As John said, though, there are a lot of variables in there. And secondly, the business.
Mr. Paley, you're out of order.
The way business has been run, there haven't been overrides. The town doesn't pass overrides, so I don't know what you're talking about. You're, you're making things up.
Seconded by Mr. Norton. Discussion? Any questions from the audience? Otherwise, we're going to vote it. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a vote to accept the motion to reject.
To reject it. Correct. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paley. Moving on to agenda item number eight, it's a discussion of the fiscal year 12 budgets. First on tap is number 149. It's Administration. And on behalf of the Administration, I see it is Sheila Manning. If you could kindly put them on up. And would you do me the honor of, just reading your mission statement? That happens to be 149 in our books, gentlemen. I do this for everybody. Just tell me what your, the mission statement of Administration is.
The role of the Town Administrator's Office is to provide services to residents in a professional, courteous and timely manner. Also to work cooperatively with municipal employees, elected officials and board and committee members resolving problems and implementing policies and procedures.
Now, just, were there some goals and objectives that you, your office, you know, that you've had? Would you like to just highlight briefly?
Uh, yes. A lot of them are ongoing. And, um, supporting the Town Administrator in the revision of the job descriptions and negotiation of union contracts, review and update of policies, and also enhancing the use of technology. Also, the exploration of the purchase of our stickers online, which was actually accomplished.
Questions from the board on any of the goals? Any, any for this year, Ms. Manning, you'd like to highlight, that you'd like to see the office? Anything? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but just anything.
We're just, one of my major goals is to come up with a, to work with the new IT director on a, a new database for the beach stick, the transfer on beach stations, stickers.
Questions from the board on any of those goals or objectives? Moving straight to your budget, if we could. Looks as though that you're in line pretty much with the Administrator recommending.
Right.
Surprise, surprise. No. I have no questions. Anybody from the board, any questions on it?
No.
Just, just to note that it, it goes from last year at almost 52 to this year at 49. It includes, you know, major town services like the phone, office supplies, copier, that sort of stuff.
Right. Xerox machine, at least of the Xerox machine.
Good. Any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know the Town Administrator's Office as well as the Selectmen's Office really were on the front line during the last storm, during every storm, I guess, with people's concerns, questions, complaints, as the case might be. And it was almost a never-ending job of answering the phone and try to, try to soothe people, try to make them understand that help was on the way and we're doing all we could to alleviate their problems. So I'd like to publicly thank Sheila as well as Kim, of course, for all they did during the storms.
Yes.
That's it. We don't need to vote tonight. We'll vote later at February, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 295, Shellfish. Come on up. If you could just identify yourself further.
I'm the Shellfish Warden in Situate.
Could you also do us a favor of reading your mission statement? Or you don't have it written? I'll read it for you. It says that the Shellfish Department's mission is to foster, protect and preserve the town of Situate's shellfishing resources and habitats in accordance with federal, state and local statutes and regulations. There you go. It looks as though, the one question I had, and maybe it's been asked in the past, but I was thinking about it and then when I was looking at the waterways, why isn't this, and this may go more towards you, Tricia, why isn't this put under the enterprise fund as a possibility? You know? I noticed that we're reseeding from the waterways, you know, shellfish or in the beds and I'm thinking, you know. Mary?
Because the waterway is an over-run schedule budget, is supported by mooring fees. Look, these people who use boats, more than boats, whereas the shellfish has nothing to do with people, you know, people who vote don't necessarily vote for shellfish.
Can we make that argument to kind of import it under as a potential? You need a boat sometimes to get out there into the flats and I, I just saw that when I, especially when I saw that you have a 1970 Boston Whaler, which I'm sure still works and is great. But it'd be nice to have something a little newer and so on. Anyway, that was my only thought process. And looking at, any questions from the board? On the boards, on the budgets or on the?
Not shellfish, no.
Okay. And your budget's pretty much consistent. You're trying to, you're basically recommending it at $11,284. Any other questions from the board?
I just want to point out that we do a very good job of this in this town. And although it's a relatively small budget, it's actually very, very important because as we all know, I mean, if you start eating bad clams or something and you're not paying attention to when they're open and closed, it can be a real problem. And, you know, we do a really good job. We have surprisingly very, very few incidents of this compared to other towns. And we've got flats in all sorts of different locations and I just think we do a good job.
Sean?
Just a couple of questions. Mr. Ferras says, "Out of town people." I know in Duxbury, to get a license in Duxbury, it's $110.
Right. We don't have a heck of a lot of out-of-town people that get licenses.
All right, okay. And secondly, could you, I don't know if you were involved, I'm sure you were, or Mark, while he's here, about the seeding of, did you correct me?
They put in 100 bushels, well, Mark, Mark and Mr. Dofny and obtained from the state a contaminated relay and put in 100 bushels of Cohogs in the rivers.
When will they be?
They're good. They're good.
Are they?
They've been tested and they're good to go.
Nice. That's, yeah, thanks, Mark.
I don't know if all 100 bushels have survived.
Right, right.
Have to ask Mr. Dofny that.
Okay. We could just ask Joe.
Yeah. Surprising questions you come up with. When they'll be, when they'll be ready, where are they?
Thank you.
That's great. Where's the butter?
Thank you very much. You appreciate it. Well, that brings us to the next one, Waterways, number 66, which is an enterprise fund.
Thanks for coming in, Joe.
If you could come up.
Rick will be signing on this one?
Yeah, right?
Good, guys, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Sean, this is the Waterways guys. What'd I tell you?
We have Mr. Mark Patterson, our Harbor Master, and also the Chairman of the Waterways Committee, Mr. John Murphy. Gentlemen, good evening, welcome. Mark, this is your budget, I guess, and would you do us the, the honor of reading your mission statement?
I would be happy to. The mission of the Situate Harbor Master, in accordance with the Situate Waterways Management Plan and the Town of Situate Mooring Rules and Regulations and Harbor Bylaws, is to ensure the safety of the voting public, promote order among vessels that habitually moor or transit Situate Waterways, to maintain and enhance town-owned maritime facilities while protecting the integrity of the harbor as a natural resource and to defray the cost of providing those services through the assessment of fees.
And he's got a lengthy goals and objectives with results and also major budget components and you've got some risks and challenges. One of the ones, at least on your goals, was the first one, it's curious. With the Chief of Police, you determined appropriate programs and resources for obtaining police powers. Just out of curiosity, what's, what are you looking for? Just as a goal, I know it's not something you have.
Basically, it's an effort just to put, to put more tools in our basket. If we can expand some of the powers that we have, that I have as a Harbor Master. It's, it's a different world than, than our parents and grandparents grew up in. We have an awful lot of transient voters, we're in a post-9/11 environment. And the likelihood of running into somebody who is less inclined to want to do the right thing is greater all the time. So, just in order to protect myself and my staff as well as the voting public, we think it may be in the interest to explore the possibility of increasing our powers and again, just putting some more tools in our basket.
Just, that's interesting. I just, I saw that, I was like, wow. But you're right, things are changing. Outside of that, I did see the only other challenge you had, one of the challenges that came to my, I highlighted, was that you've got, one of your, your budgets, about 40% of it is, is basically fiscal debt is what's going on. That's obviously paid by the enterprise fund, so it's not coming out of our, our own budget. So the people in the audience and TV understand that. But that's from all the projects that have been going on, from expanding the, the slips and, and the Marine Center. So people understand that.
It has dredging projects to the acquisition of the Marine Park, to the expansion of the Maritime Center.
All good things.
Infrastructure improvements that were undertaken over the past three or four years.
Excluding Mr. Murray, are there anybody else who has questions about the goals and objectives? And then I'll, I'll give Mr. Murray a few minutes.
No, I've all said it.
Anybody on that? Otherwise, we'll? All right, then. In that case, then we'll turn to your budget, actually. And it looks as though that's, you know, you're, you're pretty much in line with what the Town Administrator is recommending. You're not off by much, given your budget, which is 1.1 million. You're off by only about $6,000, so there's really not much error.
More.
Six thousand?
She's giving him more.
Oh, she, yeah, she's giving you more, actually. So, there's a plus there.
There is a plus there. Most of the increase is actually due to the increase.
Are you going to complain about the fact that she's giving you more money? Is it, no?
You won't hear me complain about it.
Okay. That's the time where sometimes you say, "Yeah, thank you very much, going to approve," we walk out the door. I don't, any, you go ahead. I cut you off, Mr. Patterson.
No, no, that's okay. What I was just going to say is the, the budget did go up by a small increment. But again, that's because of debt. Operationally, we actually trimmed things a little bit.
Questions, Mr. Vignani?
Just one quick question. On one of your spreadsheets here, you had projected revenue at $1,020. If I read that correctly?
Approximately, yeah, about $1,018.
And the expenses are $1,123?
Correct.
How, how are we going to make up that shortfall? Or is that, is the indirects taken out of that, Trish, or no?
No, that's included.
It includes the indirects. The, that deficit right now is sitting at about $100,000. And what we'll have to do is appropriate for retained earnings, which currently is at about $611,000. We'll make that appropriation as we did last year at special town meeting. Hopefully this year, as we did last year, we won't actually need that entire appropriation. And again, next year, as we did last year, we'll, we will get a profit out of it.
Tell me about the slips. They asked for revenue.
Yeah, we are going to be, we expanded the Situate Marine Park Marina last year. I think we increased revenues. I don't know the exact dollar amount, but we are going to increase the number of slips over there again this year. So there will be increase of revenue from slips at the Marine Park. But again, an appropriation will be, have to be made from retained earnings. But hopefully, if we can stay fiscally constrained, our spending, then we'll be able to turn money back in at the end of the fiscal year.
So you think, again, I don't know that we make budgets so that it creates a deficit. Do you think revenue is just forecasted low or you think your expenses are forecasted high?
I think when we forecast our revenues, we always forecast revenues conservatively. And spending, we kind of do the opposite. We look at the worst-case scenario for spending. By doing that, we come up with the, sort of the worst-case scenario for forecasting and hopefully the best case in reality.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I've never gotten a budget where it shows a loss without coming up with the solution?
The solution is, is in additional slips at the Marine Park and retained earnings.
Right. Retained earnings isn't a solution. That's just, you know, taking the money from the prior. I would imagine that when you do a budget, you want it to be zero at the end, right? That your costs are going to, so I know sometimes the state only lets you project revenue at the level of the prior year. I didn't know if that was, is that really the situation, Mary, that you can't?
Yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot of it.
So, so the fact that we're constrained by what we can project in revenue
Right.
is causing it to be a deficit, which will be increased by the number of slips that we're going to be putting in?
Exactly.
And we're going to back bail at the end of the year.
We're already trending ahead already this fiscal year. So, I mean, what Mark said is we appropriate from retained earnings, but then he ends up turning money back, you know, having a surplus in his budget that plows right back into retaining earnings.
Okay.
Other questions?
Just one quick comment.
Go ahead, Ed.
Just in addition to the obvious congratulations to Mr. Patterson and the Waterways Committee, just by way of explanation, since I have the opportunity here, there's a lot of different things going on that are all visible, but some of the stuff isn't really visible to the town. I just wanted to bring up people's attention to. For example, we're really trying to increase the amount of transients that come in. And that really increases a lot of the business at the restaurants and at the, at the Village Market and so on in the downtown. And so you may have seen in here some of the accomplishments, for example, is now they're accepting credit card payments for transients to come in. They're really working hard on marketing our harbor up and down the eastern seaboard. So more boats will come on in. These are difficult, obviously, to project, you know, from season to season. That's just one of the many things we're really trying to do. When the, when the new slips continue to come online, a few more each year, sometimes they end up with having bigger boats on them, which increases revenue, sometimes smaller boats. We're also working very, very hard to make sure that the municipal marinas, however, still remain attainable for people that don't have big boats. for people that don't have big boats. We really do not wanna end up just being a municipal marina filled with forty footers. We wanna make sure we're still attainable for the sixteen footers, the twenty-five footers, people that wanna blast on out to Stellwagen for fishing, or even more local than that for fishing. So we're really trying to strike a right balance of serving the public as befits the public marina, yet also attracting outsiders to help drive the local business, and help drive our, our enterprise fund, and just a bunch of things like that, that you can see in here. That's it.
Good. Gentlemen, thank you.
That's all we need.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda, or not agenda, number fourteen of the budgets, or number fourteen, four hundred jeepers, Department of Public Works, which is a very lengthy section. Mr. Banger?
I think we'll go from here on through the various Departments of Public Works, so we'll have Jim DeBarrows from the Water Division join me,
Okay.
as well as Bob Rowland, Sewer Division, as well as Kevin Cafferty from the Engineering and Transfer Station. So we can just kinda roll from one to the next.
All right, so why don't we start with number four hundred, which happens to be the Department of Public Works generally?
Okay. If I could suggest, Mr. Chairman, that, that number four hundred is really the sum total of about three or four budgets. It might be easier to look at
Individually.
Engineering.
Okay, why don't we start that way?
Highway and grounds, okay?
Well, at least read the mission statement, how about that?
Well, we'll start with, yes. Overall, the Department of Public Works is a service organization that provides residents and property owners in Cituate the series of services. So we maintain and improve the roads, the parks, the cemeteries, and the playgrounds in town. We deliver fresh water for human consumption, as well as firefighting. We dispose of all of the household trash for our members of the transfer station in a responsible manner, while encouraging recycling. We manage the collection and treatment of sanitary waste for those customers who are connected to the municipal sewer. We manage all the infrastructure construction projects in town, other than building new buildings, and we provide these services, it's our mission to provide these services in the most cost-efficient manner, and in accordance with all federal, state, local statutes, regulations, and bylaws.
Okay. Before we get started to the engineering, are there any goals or objectives? I'm assuming that, having looked at this, it seems like the goals and department goals and objectives that have been listed in Section four hundred are subsumed from the individual.
Some of these are, would be what I would call my personal goals, things that I'm working on, in addition to what the members of the department are working on.
So why don't we do this, then I'll go through the other departments, we'll go through the questions, and then at the end we'll go back over the final ones, how's that?
That's a good way to do it.
So let's start with engineering.
Okay.
Mr. Cafferty, I assume that's your end of things?
It is.
Would you do the favor of reading the engineering mission statement?
The Engineering Department manages and provides oversight on all municipal infrastructure construction projects while ensuring performance to mass general laws, while providing consulting services to all town departments, boards, and commissions.
And obviously, there have been some, some objectives and some goals. Are there any that you'd like to at least highlight as to what you've been working on through the Engineering Department?
One of the big things that we've been doing, or in, in working with the Water Department, is upgrading the water system. People have seen that on Tilden Road, Stockridge Road, Hollid Street, Country Ways, Cleaning and Lining, so we're looking to make an impact, an immediate impact, in helping out the overall water system, which is a little dated.
Okay. And anything else that you, I mean, we can go through them, but I won't go, I don't wanna belabor it, we'd be here all night, which we can be. Other accomplishments you wanna highlight at all, at least, from engineering? Or anything? If not, then I'd ask the board, any questions on at least the goals and objectives?
I just noticed, earlier today, I met the two new engineers who have been working in there. When you actually go and you look at the, your office, and with Jim on board, and Kevin, and the continuation of, of veterans who are very experienced, like Bob as well, Mr. Chair, it seems to me to be anything but business as usual in this department, so. Were anybody to mistakenly make that assertion, I would think they would really pay attention to the fact that there's a lot of change, and they're building upon the strengths they've had in the past, but there's certainly a lot of new ideas and new accomplishments being brought forth.
Thank you. Looks as though that, from your numbers here, that you are only off by about nineteen thousand dollars between what the town administrator's recommended and what you've requested in your budget?
Correct.
All right. Those differences, are there any, anything, basically, nothing sizable between, from looking at your budget here?
Just a quick question, John.
Yeah.
On this four thousand, excuse me, four hundred and eleven engineering summary, what ones does that make up, Al? Is that highway? The four eleven engineering summary, is that a combination of a couple departments behind it?
Four eleven engineering, sorry, with a total of spending of two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars? Engineering? That's just engineering.
That's just, so summary means nothing, okay.
It includes the three engineers, and it includes use of outside consultants, engineering firms, includes payment for a number of various permits that we have to apply for as a town, and then supporting materials, we've gotten here some expenses associated with the new engineers. We actually, we have now have registered in the Department of Professional, Professional Licensed Engineers, as well as Professional Landscaper, Land Surveyor, so we need some tools to go with that.
Can you move the mic over just a little bit, I think this is really hard.
Yes. Does that answer your question, Tony?
Yeah, I was just confused on the title where it said summary, I didn't know if it incorporated other departments, if it was a roll-up, but.
Any other questions on engineering? Be right to you, one moment, just from the board?
Just, just one, Kevin?
Yes, Mr. Harris.
When we were, would you just wanna bring the board up to speed, speaking about some of the new engineers you have on board? When we were surveying some of the storm damage, you talked about the CAD system that these guys use, and
Right. When we hired the two engineers, we looked for people that specialized, that were, that were very good in computer work, that were good with AutoCAD, and some of the latest systems, so that we could kind of update what we had. And ideally, in the long term, what I'd like to do is get the whole town on AutoCAD with the GIS system, and be able to show, like, our water system on that, on that, that the town would have access to. So, for example, say there was a leak or something, we could identify it immediately, what age the pipeline was, when it was installed, how old it is, what material it is, the size of it is, and which gates we would have to shut down. I mean, and obviously, long-term goal is that we might be able to even incorporate that into some of the vehicles that we have out there, so that the foreman might be able to bring that up on a computer, and know the exact gates he has to shut down,
In the middle of the night.
instead of calling the office and scrambling, looking for the paperwork of those areas. We'd like to do the same for, like, gas, and just all the utilities. We could also do with sewers, you could go with the age of the sewers, and track them, the material, what, what's in there when it was built, anytime work was done on it, and eventually, the catch basin system and everything else, survey it and get that up to speed. That's, that's a long-term goal, that's years away, because it's all survey work for each one of those individual areas, and actually get all the streets down. But it, it'll take time, but that's, that's the way we're headed.
All right, thanks.
Questions from the audience? Yes, Mr. Antonello? Yes.
There's a percentage of my salary goes to the transfer station.
This is the total?
Yes, this is the
Right, yeah.
Yep, thank you. Good, no further questions on engineering, so let's move on to the next one, if we could, which happens to be, sorry, I gotta go back here. DPW, you wanna do Administration, you wanna go to Highway Department, and then Public Grounds?
Administration, if you do that quickly, I think this consists of half of the Secretary and myself. Overall, what I'm, my mission is, is to keep, train on the tracks, take the good ideas that the people in the departments have, and serve them up as my ideas, so that you think that I'm really smart. But really, this is, the goal of the Administration, it really is to do, make sure the contracting is going smoothly, and that everybody is getting what they need, do their jobs effectively. The department budget is not very large, as you know this, it consists primarily of a half of the Secretary and myself, and a few administrative support materials.
And you've got great help, and you're administrative assistant. Questions from the board? No, all right, that one did go quick, you're correct. Yes, Mr. Antonello?
Yes, again, now, this is, this is not a question from the DOJ Board, it's a question from me, as a resident.
And your address is, so we
Thirty-four Mary Road Extension.
Thank you.
A question from, as a resident, thirty-four Mary Road Extension, and the DPW, any plans to repair, temporary repairs to private ways in upcoming, just a year? I know you said you weren't gonna do it last year, and I'm asking you a question.
I can answer that question.
Sure. Town Administrator?
The DPW will make repairs to private ways that are in the process for street road acceptance. So we have a number of people who have come forward in the community to have their private ways accepted as public ways. We actually have several before this town meeting. So as long as they are in the process, or in their queue, we will do plowing and temporary maintenance on them. So, because eventually, that helps us, 'cause they're gonna be public ways.
Some advertising out there, that people are private ways, we're to do this. Do you know that we're supposed to submit a petition?
And it's, it's been pretty well vetted, and Al, do you wanna follow up on that?
Actually, I think we're, I'm not trying to cut you off, Mr. Antonello, I just, we're very beyond on a, that's not a budget issue, and I, with all due respect, I mean, I will comment on one other thing, is if there is a road that can, is impassable for health and safety reasons, then the town will probably end up going out there to make sure the fire trucks and the police can get there. Barring that, we've dealt with the private way issue, and I, I don't wanna get into it now, because we got a lot of issues, but, so. Okay, so I, I, quick response, Mr. Banger, is there?
No.
No, okay, no, there's not. All right, moving on to the next one, which is the Highway Department, four twenty-two. And I'm looking for four twenty-two, hang on one second. Okay, I got four eleven.
You got one of these.
I didn't get one of those. How come you've got one of those, and I don't have one of those? Bear with me here. Twenty-one.
Twenty-three?
Four twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, well, somebody start with, without me, 'cause mine's not here yet, I'll find it.
I could read the mission.
Here it is, go ahead.
All right. This, this department, the Highway Department, four twenty-two, and the one we'll talk about a little later, Grounds Department, are both managed by Superintendent Mike Green, who is unable to be here this evening. So I'll be his substitute fill-in. The Highway Department's responsibilities are to manage the cost-effective maintenance and rebuilding of the town roads and town drainage systems. They ensure that all public grounds, parks, actually, let me say this, I call this the Highway and Grounds Division, all right? The, the Highway part of it, obviously, focuses on the highway, the grounds focuses upon parks, playgrounds, cemeteries, and public grounds. And the overall job of both these teams, Highway and Grounds, in the winter, is to ensure that public ways are safely passable in the winter months, and work on ways to improve that process of, of plowing streets and such, okay? So both departments, Highway and Grounds, work to plow. Highway focuses on summertime rebuilding all the town roads and the drainage systems.
Okay. I just, I was looking at your budget, and it's kinda like, obviously, splitting it up between road repairs, vehicle costs, utilities, ground supplies, building supplies, and details. It's not an awful lot, it's not a percentage-wise, but questions from the board, at least on the goals and accomplishments? Straight to your budget, then, for at least on the highways?
This is the, this is the budget that many residents have. Let me just say, I get a lot of comments from people about, gee, I need to have some, my road fixed, a pothole repaired, I've got a drainage issue. This is the department that has a lot of interest by residents to have something from it to fix up their roads, and many times I hear folks say, we pay an inordinate amount of taxes in my property, and I wanna use, I want more road work done in my area. But there, as you made a comment, Mr. Chairman, this budget is very small, it's quite small. This doesn't have a budget in here to go rebuild any roads. This is a budget to basically fix potholes, open drainage systems, clear drainage, put down new line striping, do road sweeping, and is less than one percent of the town's budget, I believe.
Looks as though that there, there's a difference between your request and what's been recommended. It's about a forty thousand dollar differential, but some of it is a difference between fuels and lubricants, trying to save fuel, it looks like, and another, it's equipment, there's some reduction there, and I think the other was rental equipment, was another thing, a difference between the two. Outside of that, there really wasn't much discrepancy. Questions from the board?
I just have sort of a, Mr. Chair, if I may, a question and a comment, and I've brought this up before, but, you know, all the new parks and stuff, from the MBTA, and some of these CPC-approved things, which I've been supported in the past, but that's increasing to your burden, not just financially, but also in terms of just keeping track of everything, these little pocket parks and all that sort of stuff. How are you, how are you coping with that, I mean, and, and interfering with, with other departments that might be involved in those?
It's a continuing challenge, the, let's, let's go to, you know, we're, we love to build sidewalks in town. I, I'm personally an advocate for building sidewalks, but of course, that imposes more maintenance responsibility. What we're trying to do is build smart sidewalks that are easier to plow in the winter. We're trying to get the right kind of equipment, so we can get in and, and do these kinds of maintenance items with the same crew that we have, because we have the same crew that we've had, in fact, the crew's gone down a little bit over the last three years. We're trying to find smarter ways of doing the maintenance on roads and sidewalks. In the area of parks, we've gone to, put out a proposal to a number of local landscape companies, an adopt-a-park program, whereby we have Northern Oaks is adopting the park in North Cituate, the, the Bell Park there.
The clock.
And they're willing to take over all maintenance of that. I said we'd supply some of the basic materials, but they'll do all the maintenance of that park. C. Johnson Landscaping Company has volunteered to take over the Green Bush Park. So this is, it gives them some benefit, 'cause there'll be a sign there saying adopted by, but it enables us to maintain that park at a higher quality than we would if we were just weed whacking and mowing it.
Okay, good. And then the other question I had is the, I think this is appropriate, but the, the shoveling and all that of, of businesses, and the sidewalks in front of businesses and all that, how's, how's that coming on? 'Cause that's, that's been a somewhat contentious issue at times in the past.
We did not, last winter, we ceased doing the nighttime shoveling brigade of the two village areas. And the merchants have, have, whether willingly, reluctantly, or enthusiastically pitched in, and I noticed that, for instance, if you go to the harbor now, by and large, you can tell that the merchants have, have handled their own sidewalks, some much better than others. The area that I am a little concerned about, that we're working on, is how do we ensure that the crosswalks are accessible to all pedestrians? So, we're gonna have to look at that. The problem is that we can't, we, we really can't send any equipment and personnel during the business daytime, or even during the weekend daytime, to clear those sidewalks, because with cars movement, it seems though, even if we blocked off the streets and brought in equipment, cars would still be coming through, pedestrians would still be coming through, so it's a public safety issue. So, if we're going to do that work, we have to do it with contractors or our personnel at a premium cost in the night, and I think it's nice that the merchants, again, whether it's, and they're reluctantly or enthusiastically have pitched in and are doing that now. So we're not shoveling sidewalks in either of the two villages.
Okay, thanks.
There are some gaps, we need to figure out how to fill, however.
Yeah, sure, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to Public Grounds. The only discrepancy there is about a The only discrepancy there is about a forty thousand dollar difference from what the town administrator's recommending, what you're requesting, it's less than what she's recommending. Any questions from the board?
It's, the last two budgets have been pretty level with last year's appropriation, even in ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
There's, there's, just help me differentiate, but there's ten people in the Highway Department, and there's nine people in the Grounds Department. The Highway Department are out there fixing the roads, um, doing the cleaning, that sort of stuff on the roads, the grounds are maintaining the, cutting the lawns and doing-
And all the schools and all the public spaces, yes.
Okay, is that the main difference? And then obviously, they all pitch in whenever there's a snowstorm, uh-
Correct.
Event that needs-
And for instance, recent snowstorms, the public grounds, people were very busy because of all the downed trees, so they, they will tend to, you know, there's no real, this is my job and that's yours, but they have focus areas, you know, they're skilled at tree removal, um, the other guys are skilled at clearing drainage systems, they all participate in snow plowing, everybody has their assigned routes, we've added more equipment and more skilled town employees to snow plowing than ever before, and which has enabled us to have fewer contractors, which cost us more, considerably more than our own personnel. So we've put more of our people on assigned routes than ever before because of the combining of these two departments and the effectiveness of the, the two teams.
Thanks. Any other questions? That takes care of buildings and grounds. I guess we move on to the snow and ice. Just so that I know, who's handling the snow and ice and who's handling the streetlights and beacons?
I can do snow and ice.
The reason why I ask is, is there any need for any of the gentlemen to stay?
That's a whole separate department.
The, okay. Snow and ice, okay, streetlights and beacons, who handles be, who's handling?
That's a whole separate one, too. Al, have we done all the departments going to four hundred? Administration, engineering-
Yes, those are all the departments at four hundred, administration, engineering, and-
Highway and grounds.
Highway and grounds.
So my question is then, who's handling snow and ice, which is you, who's going to be handling streetlights and beacons? You. The reason why I'm asking is, do we need the rest of the gentleman out to-
No, it's okay.
I don't think the gentleman is free to go.
They love to hear this.
Okay, fair enough. Let's get started.
Enterprise funds.
Sewer and water.
They're here to support me.
Not next, but that's why they're here.
Okay, so let's do the snow and ice, four twenty-three.
Snow and ice is, well, obviously, the, the role of this, the mission of the snow and ice team and budget is to ensure that the police, fire, and medical emergency equipment can move safely on our town streets, that's the first priority. The second priority then is to open up the main and secondary roads for use by the public. And then additionally, we open up all residential streets that we have prioritized as ones that we will be opening up, and then we make sure that we've cleared sidewalks used to walk to school. So if you think about through that, the priorities are established for public safety equipment to be able to move around, and then cars to be able to move around on the streets, second, the main streets, and then the secondary streets. And then we think, and at the same time, we are clearing all the school parking lots so that people can come to work, the schools can open, and the sidewalks are cleared around schools.
The only question I had on your budget was the FY eleven expended to date, you had forty-two thousand, but I realized that's because it doesn't include the two recent snowstorms, which obviously are over three hundred thousand, which we're going to talk about later on, so your budgeting for this upcoming year is pretty much level funded? That's what you're anticipating, you're hoping?
Basically, the, the strategy of, of towns is to budget, a flat budget for snow and ice, and then some years you underspend it, as we did a year ago, and then some years you overspend it, and you have to figure out how to deal with it. The, the department doesn't operate on the basis of an open checkbook, oh boy, let's go do everything we can to spend money on snow and ice, it's just a matter of, basically, we do as much as we possibly can, and then still, to listen to some of the comments the next day, it's not always quite enough for some individuals. But, you know, I, I could put myself in the, in the shoes of people who have an issue, you know, for them, that is a real issue, but they don't understand maybe some issues we've had in clearing other areas of town first.
Questions at all from the board?
Just, just two quick things, the, the state allows you to level fund, so that's why it's equal. And secondly, it's popped up in a few conversations on your mission statement here, where number four is to clear sidewalks to walk to school. That's sidewalks, not roads to get people and buses to schools.
Correct.
It's really, it's the orange machine that, that cleans off all the sidewalks in town. So your first priority is roads, your second priority is sidewalks.
Correct, and the, the sidewalk machine actually is, as soon as the fellow who's responsible for that is off the trucks doing roads, as soon as his route is completed, he goes on the sidewalk machine and is on that continuously. And the sidewalks we prioritize are the ones that lead to schools. So we look at the walking routes to school, now, you know, you may be in an extreme situation where your children walk six miles to school, not all six miles will be cleared, so it's kind of, within the reasonable area of the school, those, those sidewalks are cleared first, and then we go on all the other sidewalks in town.
And are there two machines or one?
There is one machine.
So Wampanoag may be getting cleaned before Cushing, so it's just the order of operation?
Yeah, and we, you know, he strives to get them done so that, by the, usually if the storm is bad enough that we're out there, the schools were closed, and so we've got pretty much an advanced day to get ahead of it. But it, it's, you know, depends on the storm, and the storms we've had this year, the three storms have been particularly ugly because of the duration of the storm and the switching between snow and ice and rain and sleet and freezing.
Thanks.
So if I understand this, this is sort of to you and Mary, just so I understand, so you're, you, you level fund each year?
The budget starts out level funded, yes.
You can't cut it.
You can't cut it. Now, if this year, for example, we end up spending, I don't know, three ninety, which is more than we budgeted for, does that mean next year we have to spend three ninety, or do we have to spend the two hundred?
You have to budget it, you don't have to spend it.
But you have to appropriate what you spent last year, or what you-
You have to appropriate what you appropriated the year before, you cannot-
Okay.
It has to be the same or higher.
As what was appropriated, not what was spent?
Not what's spent.
Now, that's assuming if you have the deficit spent. If it turns out that we know that it's going to be really hot and sunny for the next three years, we could say, let's reduce the budget, expect no snow, and then you, you could then change it that way. For that next year. But the following year, you could, if you, if you go to whatever.
And that, which brings up my point, Al, Al, how's your crystal ball? Do you have the ability to predict snow for the next two or three years?
You know what, we have trouble predicting it for the rest of the week.
All right, gentlemen, 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 all right. I think the points-
John, I just want to add a couple of things. This budget, I mean, you know, we get, Al gets, we all get concerns about snow removal and the maintenance of roads. This budget is almost twice the size of most area communities. We just recently did a survey, because one of the towns wanted to find out who was in deficit already with their snow budget. So that doesn't mean that we're overspending, what it means is we're less likely, hopefully, to end up in a deficit. Holbrook's snow removal budget is fifty-two thousand dollars. Middleborough's is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that doesn't mean that's their total snow budget for the year, because they're going to go into deficit. So I just want to keep in mind, even though folks have concerns sometimes about streets and everything, this budget is considerably higher that we devote to snow and ice than other communities.
Why would they do that? Why would they enter-
And some of that, I think, might be a factor of the private roads maintenance in the past, the number of sidewalks we have in town, but just as a, a frame of reference, I think you should know that.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I just, you raised, you piqued my interest, and I know it's eight twenty-five, so I want to move through a lot more budget, but why would, why would towns go through and significantly under budget?
Knowingly.
Something, knowing that they're going to deficit-
They do, it's just that they take it off the top of their free cash. I mean, what I tend to do is take a rolling three to five-year average, because you can't predict the weather. I mean, last year, he turned back money, we'll be lucky if he's not in deficit, even with this four hundred and eighty-six, he's at three fifty right now, and that's not counting any treatment they might have done today.
Yeah.
So, and that's going to come right off our free cash.
Sean?
Just one question, I thought the sidewalk machine had an attachment with a snow blower, didn't we not get it?
It does, yes.
All right, could we, I haven't seen him use it. The only reason I ask is because you get your roads cleared, and then when the sidewalk machine goes down, it pushes it into the narrow roads that are narrow enough already, and then if it freezes, we're in trouble. Wouldn't they be better off using the snow blower, putting it on the lawns, or have the truck go along?
Yeah, we are, it, this last snowstorm was so slushy, it was, that was a big question. But the, we are, we are evaluating the whole strategy we use for sidewalks, because as I said earlier, we have some situations where we have sidewalks that, um, uh, business owners are clearing, but then right abutting it is an area where there's no business owner, so, you know, it creates a problem for pedestrians. So we're trying to figure out what are we going to do with sidewalk clearing, bring some rationale to that. So we do have a snow blower, we used it in the previous, the winter before, when we had such heavy snows, we didn't have so much heavy snow last year. And we have two climates in Situate, everybody knows, I mean, you, you do plowing yourself for the state, so from three A to the shore isn't a, it's, it's one whole strategy and one whole set of issues, and from three A to Norwell, it's altogether different, you know? We had a slurpee situation, you know, it's just like that slushy drink that you have, yeast, and over there, they got a lot of snow, I mean, it's, it's amazing, so we, it's constant adjustment.
Any other questions? Otherwise, we move on to beacons and streetlights. Mission statement on beacons and streetlights is basically provide adequate light, uh, streetlighting for town streets, roads, intersections, crosswalks, neighborhoods, and at an affordable cost within a limited budget. And basically, you've requested two hundred and nine thousand, that's what the town administrator's recommended, and the only difference is basically about sixteen thousand from last year, it's an increase. Anticipate that might be a little more expensive.
It was a increase in our electric cost, electricity cost from National Grid, who is our supplier here. When we do this project called the ESCO, one of the things we'll be doing is auditing all of the, uh, streetlights, looking for ways to improve the utilization, whether it's LED lighting, or moving, reducing some, adding others, that sort of thing, so.
Quick question.
Tony?
Can we use the windmill and the solar array to power these things, or is, or does it work that way because we're someone fat?
Yes, our total electric budget will include all the electricity for this, but a lot of, some of this is we rent those lights. You know, we pay for the light on the pole, now, and they charge us for the presumed electricity for the light, because they're their lights, not our lights.
Is that something, I'm assuming the answer is no, but we don't want to get into buying lights and having wrong-
You can't, some municipalities have, it's a huge, it's a capital outlay.
So then again, we rent the pole?
Number of communities have bought their-
No, we don't own the light. National Grid owns the light, and they'll charge us five dollars a month for a forty-watt sodium ion, or whatever it's called, and they'll charge us six fifty a month for this other kind of light with a higher output.
So we pay, rent the light and then pay for the electricity going with it?
Well, we rent the light and that includes the electricity.
Sounds like it's cheaper to rent it than it would be to buy it.
You know, it's, that's why we need, we're going to, the ESCO will help us through with that, you know, there are LED lights out there that are, run on much lower electricity with a greater output, so, you know, we, we're going to tackle that one.
Big time.
And it's been on Tricia's list and my list as well, to get a, a resource in who will, on a finder's fee basis, go resolve this question we have. There, and a second question that's lingering is, are, do we have all the streetlights we're paying for?
That's a great question.
Try to figure, try to go audit streetlights, I mean, it was hard enough to audit double utility poles, but you audit streetlights, A, you can only do it at night, and then you got to find out what pole number it is, so you got to stop, read the pole number, and then you got to go back and look in this obnoxious list to see if you're, if it's turned on or turned off, or broken, you know, so it's, it's a, it's, it's a target of opportunity.
Just, just, did I understand you correctly, that we actually pay a flat fee per, like, it's like seven dollars a pole, is that?
Per light, yeah.
Per light, and that's all, so we've got two hundred and nine thousand divided by seven, thirty thousand poles in town?
Yeah, there's, I, I can't remember the number offhand, but-
I mean, but that's simply-
Yeah.
It's some flat fee for pole, so if we wanted that to go down, just-
Right.
Get rid of some poles.
When, when some residents on Peggy Beach Road wanted to turn off a light, remember that proposal that came through you? And then we turned off a bunch in North Situate because we put in those new streetlights that we own. You go back to the utility company, and they, they do take that off the list.
So all those lights in like North Situate that were turned off, they haven't come collected, they just left them there, the National Grid?
No, it's, uh, it's more expensive to take the light down than it would be to just leave them there.
Crazy, crazy. Mr. Pell, you had a question?
I just read an article recently about LED lights, and the problem is they don't generate heat, and they found that there was a town that experimented with it, and they spent more money chipping ice and snow off the lights in the winter than they saved.
Electricity-wise.
They weren't generating enough.
That's one good thing for Christmas lights, you know? All right, moving on for the next item, which happens to be the Enterprise Fund for Water Enterprise, number sixty-five. Barrow, if you could just read the mission statement?
Sure, uh, mission statement, provide safe, sanitary, tasty, and drinking water in sufficient quantities and pressure to meet the personal, commercial, and firefighting needs of the community at reasonable and sustainable rates.
Any questions on the goals or objectives from anybody? Not, then, um, get to the budget. It's number sixty-five. Town administrator's recommending more, it looks like, to your budget. Mr. Harris?
No.
No.
Any questions at all?
Just, John, lest you think he's getting a gift.
It's all in debt.
The debt budget is up. My line item ends where it says materials and supplies, and I actually cut it eighteen thousand, so.
So your debt is two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars higher than their recommended debt. Does that mean you want to buy something they don't want?
No, no, the, when we, when we did our budgets, we used last, since, since the debt and money wasn't available, we just used a plug number in there, and then Mary came back and gave you exciting, uh, higher numbers. Which we're going to be happy to take advantage of.
The only, the question that I have is just similar to the one that I asked the Harbor Master, is the revenue side, the projected revenue is two point eight one nine, and the budget is two point eight eight five. Are we?
Well, we predict to have a five percent increase of water.
And that's not on the revenue?
Yes. What number are you looking at, Tony? Yeah, so, okay, on this, on that sheet there?
Yeah, two eight one nine.
At the very bottom of your water revenues, the total for FY twelve?
Right. We are, we are still working with Mary on what the right numbers are for this.
So you expect the revenue is wrong, not the expense?
Yeah. We are going to stay within a positive cash flow in this department, so there, there may be some items that we will have to subsequently not spending in the coming year in order to keep things on the positive.
It just makes sense that the budget, that those two numbers should tie before-
You know, first, for instance, we have, the revenues this year are a full two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars higher than projected, because we had so much water consumed this summer. But the way the revenue projection works for the state is that you have to use, um-
Fiscal year two thousand and ten.
It's like any business, you know, you try to get your sales up, but, and, but you have to manage it carefully. So what, what Jim is particularly focused on is managing the production of water side, the production of tasty and safe water, and staying within budgets. And what the rest of us are trying to do is to figure out, how do we make sure that our revenue and budget lines match, and that the capital we reinvest and the debt that we incur as a result of that all come out so that we have a healthy department with revenues producing positive reserves, and reserves high enough that they cover in case of an emergency, we've got some reserves money available to us.
Two other questions, do you know what the retained earnings is in this enterprise fund?
Retained earnings, four oh seven.
Four oh seven, and years ago, we had a five-year plan to increase the water rate five percent for five years, is this year five? Is this year five, or four?
This is year two.
Can we divert, um, like, I don't know, it's not year two, is it?
No, I was, I was.
I was gonna say, I think it was like three, isn't it? We started doing it three or four years ago.
We did it my first year.
We'd like to contact you again with a proposal of how we would like to continue to invest in our water maintenance, uh, waterline. See, the, we have a hundred miles of waterlines, uh, many of which were put in back in oh six. Um, and what we're trying to do is ensure that when we do a project that takes the road apart, that at the same time, we make sure, before we put the road back together, we've got everything underneath it.
The way you want it.
Taken care of for the next fifteen years, cause that's how long the road would last, if we didn't keep digging it up.
Well, I'm not, I guess my question was really to our first commitment to it, and again, our water rates are lower than any of the surrounding communities, so that doesn't mean that there shouldn't be another one, but the first five-year commitment that the board, I wasn't even on the board that, at that point, when does that end? Does that end in twelve?
You know, I haven't been keeping track, but I imagine it's about now.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was my first year, which was two thousand and six.
Should've been close to now.
So it's coming up.
Yeah.
It's coming up. But we are, as Mr. Vignani just said, we're still well on the down and the lowest side of the list compared to neighboring communities.
But that's the problem, and Tony, we met, Mary and I met with Al on all the enterprise funds and Mark, um, last week to make sure, just the question you're asking, um, because sometimes it says, oh, well, there's retained earnings, what the heck? But there needs to be, the retained earnings is like its own little stabilization fund, in my mind.
Yeah.
So, um, what's been happening in the water department particularly is they've been doing this work, which the five percent increase has been sort of paying, but now the debt for that, you know, technically now that five percent increase is really eating the debt service. So I've told Al, and you'll see it in the capital plan as well, they're scaling back a little bit, um, on projects for FY twelve, and you'll see the same in sewer. We've been really aggressive, but the enormity of what we have to do is so large, but it has to come up with the revenue stream to do it.
For the out years.
And it's, it's a two-edged sword, because the more revenues they increase, the more water usage we have. But yet, as Al said, Jim's got an educational program where we know who the highest twenty-five users are. We want to encourage through education first, those big users for conservation, and then maybe move to more punitive things, um, if they refuse to, um, conserve, because it's a, you know, an excess expense, but that affects the revenue side. So, we have all these things that we're trying to balance, but that five percent now, now, when we float that bond, is going to the PNI, and the operating expense needs to adjust that, and that's what Al has to do for both this, transfer station a little bit in sewer, because the revenues to the expenditures are gonna be off, just as you're asking. But we are, we looked at all of them last week before they came in tonight, and I'm comfortable with where they're at.
I guess my question is, did, did the boards commit to a five percent increase in this year, or not?
I don't think you ever really committed, uh, what you committed was, I, I think the departments came in at the time and said, we need to really replace these pipes. We've got this, uh, study that was done in two thousand, and we need to go about it in a certain order and replace the pipes, and, uh, they came in and said, uh, we want a big chunk of money to do that, I'm, I'm projecting now, and the board said, I think I'd like you to pace it out over a few years.
Right.
And that's when they came up with a five-year plan, five percent.
Yeah.
And so I think every year you will prudently look at what's proposed, in terms of the projects that are proposed, and the capital that's proposed, and, and the, um, and the debt that's required, and then what, what you wanna do with the rates. So, I, I think you, it, it's, it'll be your choice.
And to answer your question, if it started the year that Rick started, then, I remember voting on it every year I've been on, so that's four years, so, I, if it started the year before, then we're, this is year five.
Getting close, yeah. And every.
Budget's predicated on that five percent.
What we have to do now is we have to reinvest in the infrastructure at a rate of debt load that the department can sustain with its revenues, okay? So it's gonna be more debt load driven, okay, than anything else, I think, at this point.
All right. Okay, after.
If I could also just add one thing that we haven't discussed, and, and got only short thrift here, but is, uh, Jim and Al and their team are also looking at, at, um, coming up with new water, and new water in collaboration with Jeff Rosen's Committee of Water Resources, but that means rebuilding some of the wells that are out there, and then also, as we were talking about, Galen, Damon Pond, and all these sorts of things. So that's another, another leg of the chair, as it were, in terms of the conservation, on the one hand, putting you out of business, on the other hand, you know, dealing with, uh, high-yield customers and so on.
And one thing Jim did, um, when he first got here, was we have two wells that were grossly underperforming on Route one twenty-three, opposite, um, the moving place.
Yeah.
And had both those wells, not re-drilled, but basically refracked, re, re, uh, rebuilt, and has, uh, what, tripled or quadrupled the output of water from those wells, which means we run the, the treatment plant for less, and water from wells tastes better than water from treatment plants. And we've got another well we've got our eye on now for rebuilding. So, this is the advantage of having someone coming from the treatment side into the superintendent's room, and the rest of us have been focusing upon the distribution side.
All right, moving on to Sewer Enterprise Fund. Mr. Rowland, if you could read that mission statement for us.
Mission statement of the fluid region, uh, to ensure the proper collection, treatment of wastewater and environmental sound, cost-effective manner, and check new health while meeting NPS discharge requirement, metal regulator operation requirement. Exchange of gas system to serve new customers by taking steps to eliminate or reduce groundwater infiltration and maintain a high-quality effluent and regenerative process.
Thank you, and, um, again, it just, uh, it looks like the similar situation with the, um, with the water. Town administrator has cut certain, uh, things with materials and supplies, as well as, um, some, um, looks like, um, personal, personal services, as well as purchase of services. However, she's also trying to address, and she's recommending more, but that's more on the debt servicing of, um, some of the, um, principal on long-term notes and interest. Questions from the board?
I just brought the same question. The first two ones weren't too bad, but the difference in revenue and expenses in this one is dramatic.
We are going to talk, one of the things we committed in the goals from last year to this year was to look at, one of the concerns that we had developing was, uh, we have money coming in from betterments that pays for the expansion of the sewer system, and much of that comes in over twenty years, okay? A good chunk of it comes in all at once. That is, uh, how much of that retained earnings therefore is pre-payment of a betterment, we still have to pay at some point in the future. So Mary, uh, has helped significantly by doing that analysis, and it's clear that we have been holding rates constant in this department for seven years, and we just need to have a rate increase, and I'll show you the numbers in that later on tonight. If you wanna do that now, we could do that, or you could.
We'll do it later on, just so we can get moving together.
Just, what is a retained earnings?
One point one six one.
One point one s, one point three?
I'm sorry, one point three six one, sorry, it's right in front of me, I can't read it.
But the deficit is over two million dollars.
Well, I, he doesn't have the debt exclusion in there, his debt.
Oh, his debt has it in there?
Six twenty-eight.
Say that number again?
Six hundred and thirty-one thousand will be coming in for tax.
So it's only a million four short. So how, how do we make that up? How do you make up the million four deficit between expenses and projected revenue?
You have about four hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Oh, that's cause you're gonna use the retained earnings, is that?
No, that's before we use the retained earnings.
Oh, you gave me the debt number that it should be, six thirty-one is what it should be, not this two.
That's what we're gonna get from the, is the debt exclusion, that amount of debt.
The revenue that's coming in, so I got revenue on page.
So I had, um, I had one point one five million, plus the sewer revenue, plus the six hundred and thirty-one thousand, plus we have the betterment added taxes, which would probably be about nine hundred and fifty.
Oh, well, that's a part you didn't say.
My sheet.
So nine hundred thousand dollars from Betterment.
Right.
Six thirty, nine hundred, so that's about two point eight on a budget of three point three.
Also, the revenues don't reflect, um, the FY eleven revenues and the FY twelve, we, the revenues are understated because they're based upon the previous year's revenues, but the revenues are up significantly because of the water consumption that was used this year, so.
So that's the timing of the.
Yeah.
So is the oh nine number the actual, two, one point two, or ten is probably? One point, so we're using fiscal two thousand and ten actuals, so eleven went up, so twelve will go up also.
All right, more questions on budget?
I get it. Um, Bob's, uh, one of the significant goals in this area is that, um, the water, I mean, the, sorry, the amount of, um, flow that he's processing, uh, is a baseload, uh, as a, if you look at the baseload, which is our flow from our connected customers, and then you look at what we have in the, in the other times of the year, when it's rainy or when we have any kind of storm event, uh, the amount of leakage into the system is immense, um, and it's up to three times of what we actually are producing from our customers. We're having to treat with chemicals and, uh, pump importantly, a huge bill for this department is the electricity bill. So, we're on a mission to, uh, sort out, uh, with an engineering firm, how can we parse down our community and find out where is the biggest opportunity for us to reduce the inflow and infiltration of groundwater into our system?
And this is a new engineering firm from whom we've worked with in the past, is that correct?
Yes.
Cause we've been working on this for a long time, but this new engineering firm has a more progressive, aggressive approach to it.
Yeah, they've got a, we're using a more engineering approach.
Mr. Norton?
Just a comment, I think over the past years, I've watched the, the three-month rolling average gradually go up, up, up from one million to, up to one point three, I think we reached one point four. Recently, I think the last month, uh, in particular, last couple of months, I've seen it go down.
Yeah.
It's down from maybe one point two eight, or whatever it was. Interesting, to say the least, with more people being put on, it doesn't seem to make any sense that the rolling average would go down, but it has, and it's gone down for the past two or three months, which is a good sign, I guess.
Well, it's, uh, it is, it is a very good sign. In other words, what you're concluding is that adding people, actually, Joe, adding people doesn't add, uh, adding people, of course, adds sewage.
Yeah.
But, um, the important thing to tackle is the sewage we don't wanna get anyway, that's just coming in, leaking into the system.
And it seems to be working, we seem to, we must be getting less of that.
Yeah.
Because if we're adding people.
And the flow's going down.
And the flow's going down, then we have to be doing something on the other side of the scale, so, keep watching.
Bob's, uh, Bob's objective is to be number one in the number two business.
Al, would you repeat that, so if we treat?
Bob's objective is to be.
No, would you, uh, did you say if, if we, you feel we're gonna treat a thousand gallons of effluent, and you're, you're saying that three times of that is leaking in, so we're treating four hundred thousand?
Our, our base flow is about seven hundred thousand gallons a day, and we, when it's, when it's been bone dry outside and not a drip of water could possibly leak into the system.
Right.
Seven hundred thousand gallons a day is the flow, in the middle of the summer, when as many customers are here.
Yeah, and our lawns are brown and all that. Joe and I.
If you've seen it, it many times when the flow is three million gallons a day.
But I mean, we, Joe and I have been sitting here for a long time with, you know, previous administrations, and they convinced us we get the worst leaks first, so I'd stand there and support that all day long. It doesn't seem like that's really the case.
Well, uh, they worked on the biggest lines first, which are the easiest ones to fix, where you can see the big leaks. Right now, where the leaks are is, um, probably every connection that we haven't, every connection in Sand Hills or in, uh, Lighthouse Point leaks. It's clay pipe laid in there, and those things have twisted and turned, it's all in sand. High tides, you can see the flow go up, low tides, the flow goes down. Um, big storm events, the salinity of the water coming into the sewer treatment plant is way up, other times it's way, you know, I don't know if it ever goes down, it does go down.
And it's often between the house and the town line, too.
It's between the house and the town line, yeah.
It's not just the town line, right, so it's in someone's backyard.
They're clay pipes, you know, they're all.
That's why there's people out at night with this contract that are actually opening the manholes, putting flow meters in, trying to get an evaluation of how much flow is going through there at different times, in challenging that with the tides and the weather.
That's huge, that could make the difference of.
Absolutely.
You know, the next two priorities are just getting tied in, I mean, that's, that's, I hope what Rick said is true.
The work is saying it's funny, but it, more importantly, as you're implying, it's growing our capacity. Uh, we, we could, if, our permit allows us to take twice as many, uh, gallons per day as our base flow is.
Right.
Unfortunately, it's all taken up with leakage.
Sewer. Yeah, we ask for electricity in the street.
It's not a unique situation to Situate, I mean, uh, we talked to the DEP about this, who's the best in, in the league on this, and they said, everybody's always working on I and I, it's just a continuum. And so that's why we said, well, we need to do something other than just, uh, we, we went out and hired an engineering firm to help us with that.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on to the next, um, budget, which is the transfer station number sixty-three. Al, was that you? Kevin.
Uh, the mission statement is to cost-effectively dispose of household waste while meeting the needs of stakeholders in a clean and pleasant manner.
So, basically, um, between what's been requested and what's been, uh, recommended, it's pretty much an even Steven game here.
We've been cut, but same as before on some of the debts, the debts have increased. Um, I think we've cut like twenty thousand.
Questions from the board?
Your supplies went up fifty thousand dollars from last year's appropriation?
Part of that was the prior year, they bought a whole bunch of bags, enough bags for almost another year's supply, so we didn't need to buy bags, and that was cut in the budget. This, this following year, we have to buy the bags. So they bought them in bulk a couple of years ago.
Couple of years, cause it was twenty-eight the year before that, so the, in two thousand and nine.
We saw a decrease, uh, we bought a whole bunch, saw a decrease the next year. You guys know which year it was?
Well, in ten, we bought twenty-eight thousand, in eleven, we bought fifty-one thousand, and then, year to date, we've spent seventy-seven thousand, and now, in twelve, we're projecting a hundred thousand.
Supplies.
Item five, four, two, three.
So we're backspooling supplies?
I believe it's supplies, yeah.
Well, if you can just look and, it's just a.
What we did was, we had, um, when, when we got here, when I, in oh eight, sorry, in June of eight, we put a bid out for more bags, had a bag contract, and then we said, hey, we need to do an inventory of what we have, and we had two years' worth of bags, so we cut back on buying bags in ten, and, uh, now we're back buying those bags. This, this is the, we pay twelve, thirteen, fourteen cents a bag, please put the blue bags, which you paid two bucks for. Yeah, so we are, these are the proposals. But we can get back to that.
Yeah, just to confirm, and then the revenue on this one is much closer than, uh, same, same dilemma we've been talking about in all of them, right, where.
We're more in balance in this, I think we're, we're in good shape.
It's only off a hundred and.
We expect a change in the tipping fee.
Commitment is to live within our budget, you know, to live within the revenue budget. We don't foresee any great increases in this department. And picking around, uh, a couple of ideas for future improvements for the benefit of our customers, but we have to be able to pay for it as we go, so.
And what's the retained earnings, Mary, do you know?
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand, so not much.
Right.
But you were in deficit two years ago, and you had a surplus last year.
Well, we increased the price, I mean, I guess this goes to show that we needed to increase the price of the bags. But it's still tight.
We increased the price of the bag in September of two thousand and nine.
No, two thousand and nine.
Nine. That was right after you also had the bag problem, you switched vendors again, which was good, cause these bags you got now are good. How's the scale working out and people going over that?
Working out very well. Um, basically, what was required is.
Um, basically, what was required is anybody coming in with any material, um, that's not in the bags, has to go over the scale, they get weighed in and they get weighed out, and they get charged, um, a hundred and twenty dollars per ton, um, which is the rate for the C and D disposal.
Yep.
That, that saved a lot of grief, because, try and estimate people coming in with barrels and everything else, because they were, we were finding people coming in with barrels full of shingles covered with, you know, paper, you know, and miscellaneous stuff, so it just, it settled it all and kept it on a level playing field.
Yeah, it's great.
Um, one other thing with the, with the transfer station, the guy's been doing a great job on, is, um, any snowstorms, they, they help out, and they've been working, you know, um, twenty-four hours a day when need be, in coming in the rough days to help from the storm cleanup, they've really been doing a good job, so, likely even better for that. So if we do have to close the transfer station, sometimes it's because the guys who work twenty-four hours and they're just spent.
Good, gentlemen, that's it, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, can we get to selectmen, would that be okay, or how would you like to, how can you do two things at once, that's gonna be my question, um, all right, one twenty-two for selectmen. How about, you want me to read it, Kim, or do you, go ahead?
The mission statement for the board of selectmen is as follows, the department maintains the chief executive office of the board of selectmen, who oversee the efficient and orderly operation of town government. The department carries out all administrative duties of the board of selectmen, including the annual appointment process, licensing, bi-weekly public meetings, annual and special town meetings, and serves as a link between the board of selectmen and the residents of the town of Situate.
Kim provided us with a budget, and it's a great budget, and it's pretty much, um, the same as, um, it's actually less than what we appropriated for last year, trying to save money, and much less than, uh, from fiscal year two thousand and ten, and, uh, we're really no deviation between, um, what's requested and administrative recommendation. Questions at all from the board?
I just have one, is the, the legal bills, that falls under our budget.
Right.
We, we decreased it by fifteen thousand dollars. Do you know what we are year to date, Mary, by any chance?
I'm sorry, I was looking for, and I don't think I brought that one with me. I think the last time I looked, we were pretty good, we were, we've actually had, we're running dinner then.
We just moved ten thousand out of it at town meeting, too.
All right, so that's not out of the appropriation.
Yeah.
So it is pretty much flat, maybe you can email me tomorrow?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Seeing none, great, thank you, Kim.
Welcome.
Pretty quick. Oh, the next one, we should grill a lot, what's that one?
Well, actually, you, you were easy on Kim, cause most of the budget cuts in the selectmen are for you, so, just so.
All right, we wanna go easy on her, we know, she might come up with more.
So, don't blame Kim and me next year when you're surprised, so.
Maybe we better look at that again.
That's good. All right, moving on to, uh, one twenty-three, town administrator.
Uh, the mission statement of the town administrators, to provide continuous evaluation of town programs and services, provide adequate revenues for both operation and capital support of these programs, and maintain adequate financial reserves for unforeseen events or economic downturns, to manage day-to-day act, town activities, departments, and staff, that ensures professional, equitable, and courteous service delivery to residents and constituent groups at the most efficient cost.
Questions from the board?
Just one comment, is the legal fees that we took out of that budget have really gone in here for collective bargaining, so, really just moving it there.
Yeah, and the, and that line items also, when we say collective bargaining, it's also for arbitrations, hearings, grievances, opinions, so there's a lot more in that just for contract, yeah.
And the, um, ten thousand dollars that we've carried here, is that really the incentive program that we've talked about, is that what that, on the, the bottom there?
Um, it's a combination, sort of a couple of line items together, cause there's, for merit for non-union and union, and then, so, the union merit is in the contract bargaining and other services, and it's also for folks who have employment contracts, like the chief, myself, um, Mary, Jane.
Right, so none, done.
Well, that was good, you got off easy. We'll move on to, uh, insurance, one ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
I'm assuming, Tricia, you're gonna handle the remaining?
Uh, yep.
Four.
Uh, insurance, really, is that where we are now?
We're on insurance, yep, general liability.
It's the last one.
Before public, there's no cap for.
So we all know about the insurance, it's actually sixty thousand dollars lower than it was in FY ten, and it can go up two percent if we remain around a certain loss ratio of, around, um, component, so, the four hundred thousand also provides an allowance for any deductibles we have to pay. Seventy-five hundred is the deductible on public property, five thou, public officials, five thousand on property, so if we get any insurance money for the pumper or the loader, there'll be a five thousand dollar deductible on each of those. I'm sorry, that's not right, that's an auto deductible of a thousand, property damage.
This is liability service.
Right, yeah.
What did we say, deductibles, five thousand?
Property loss, and seventy-five hundred for public officials.
And did you put that in? Did you put, like, a contingency in there for a claim?
Yes, that four hundred represents that.
Any other questions? All right, we're moving quickly here, how about uninsured, unemployment insurance, which is nine thirteen?
I'm gonna find it.
Basically, level, you're level funding it for the same amount from last year as it is this year, three hundred thousand.
Tony, I gave you the expenditure to date on that.
You have eighty-six thousand, it, uh, is it changed? This looks like it's through, uh, December thirty-first.
Yes, we don't, we don't get the December bill, we get bills.
So what do we do, unemployment? So we're up to, um, one nineteen.
Hundred.
Hundred and nineteen thousand, so.
Through the end of November. So that's five months. So, if we stay at this pace, we'll be about there. Now, did, did you ask Mary about that pool or that fund? I remember years ago, when I was on the advisory, we, there was a, an amount of funds that, if you didn't use it, it kinda went into this surplus.
That was the workers' comp.
That was comp, okay. I'll hold that for the next one.
Let's see, any other questions on unemployment, otherwise let's get to workers' comp, which is nine twelve. Again, you're also level funding this the same amount.
Yes, I had hoped to actually lower that this year, cause we settled out two claims, but, um, the medical expenses, uh, one of our claimants had a major surgery, um, quite expensive, so unfortunately, I have to request the same amount, and Mary actually and I had a conversation about this last month, cause we really should be socking some of this away, and we're not getting there.
So is this the one where we used to have a pool that was about four hundred thousand dollars several years ago?
Yes.
And where did that go?
It's all been going up.
So it's all been spent, so is this twenty-seven thousand what's left in there?
No, that, um, that was our opening balance for this beginning fiscal year.
In that pool?
Right, from that pool, was twenty-seven thousand, so right now, our balance is about a hundred and thirty-four thousand almost.
And is this the one that, Tricia, you mentioned should be up around seven, is that?
Yeah, I mean, look at, we spent three hundred and three thousand in FY ten, and we're only, we're only putting a hundred and sixty in, but, but you really should be rolling over a good cushion.
Building it up. What would be a good number to have as a cushion, then?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Gotcha.
Cause what happens if you get an employee that's permanently disabled, you're paying it out of this fund.
Right.
If they can't retire.
Don't we, do we have insurance for that?
This is your self-insured workers' comp.
But there's not like a, an umbrella or something on top of that?
There's a stop loss on the medical, but for exposure, you can't do on future loss of earning, that's why it needs to really be up there.
Presently, we are at, um, a hundred and thirty-three.
A hundred and ninety thousand.
A hundred and ninety, well, that's what we're proposing, but we're currently, this year, at a hundred and thirty-three.
Tight.
Okay, other questions? Um, moving on to, uh, veteran affairs, five forty-three.
This one we need to chat a little bit about, cause you'll see that it's increased significantly, and I did talk a little bit about it when I gave the budget overview a few weeks back, so I don't wanna be redundant, but, um, what the budget mainly is, um, providing for is an increase in veteran service payments that we get reimbursed on, but also to, uh, employ a clerk for ten hours a week to do the administrative stuff associated with, um, the increase in claimants from three to twenty-two, and we could have more, but we'll probably have at least the same going into FY twelve.
Just out of curiosity, I'm sorry, I just see landscaping supplies, what's that?
Graves and markers.
Just the flags, okay, so we pay for it.
Yeah, flags, yeah.
I thought that was the veterans, but that's great.
So this budget's doubled over FY eleven.
And again, that's just for money that we pay out to veterans in need.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That we get reimbursed seventy-five percent from the state.
Yeah, but this is, this is our share of that, that's our.
That's our, oh, it's not a time difference.
This is our share.
This is us.
And I don't, I mean, we just talked.
Well, we get the seventy-five percent back on the cherry sheen.
Right.
A year later.
So do we really give out four times this?
Yeah, um, this is what we're giving out, yeah, that's what we give.
So not four times, this isn't our twenty-five percent, this is the hundred percent.
No, that's a hundred percent.
And then the reimbursement comes back on the state cherry.
But just like we talked about workers' comp, this is another budget we're.
It could go up.
It could go up significantly, even in FY eleven.
And they have been going up as the number of veterans goes up, isn't it?
That's, it's directly proportional.
The economy.
You've, I've already gotten a reserve fund to do the clerical stuff, cause we went from three to twenty-two, and, you know, that's a monthly benefit verification submittal, um, so, I'm, I'm a little concerned.
Economy and the number of veterans, I was talking to Gary, I started, number of veterans just alone has been going up. Twenty-year war. All right, I think that concludes our discussion for the fiscal year twelve, uh, budget, um, seeing that, I'd like to then move on to, uh, agenda item number nine, which is a discussion award electricity contract, uh, for fiscal year eleven and for fiscal year twelve. Um, Tricia, are you doing this, or is Al doing that?
I thought Al was doing it, but.
Tell you what, um. He had more budgets to do.
Let me see.
Al's got the next one, Al's gotta be here soon. I tell you what, why don't we take a, a quick five-minute break, is that okay, folks? And we'll come right back.
That sounds great.
We've been sitting here for over two hours, so I'd like to take a five-minute break, we'll reconvene in about, uh, five minutes at nine fifteen. Thank you. It's all right, okay. Thank you very much, Kim.
Okay, oh, Kim, thank you.
I'm gonna take Tony's, don't anybody tell anyone. These are caramel.
We're on tape.
You can't do this, I love caramel.
This is excellent.
All right, let's go back, we're starting, it is, uh, agenda item number, um, nine, which is a discussion award of the electricity contract for fiscal year eleven and twelve. Al, it looks as though that, um, you have, um, a proposal for this, for us.
Yes.
To reduce payments from Constellation New Energy by saving the town about five hundred and twelve thousand, let's see, or, reduce payments.
Sixty-eight.
Uh, versus the original contract that we have, and that the overall savings will be over six hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
And, um, at this point, you're looking for us for a motion. to enter into two short-term contracts with Constellation New Energy, otherwise known as CNE, from February of two thousand and eleven through June of two thousand and eleven, for about ten cents per kilowatt. The total value of that contract's for a hundred and forty-seven thousand. Contract two is from, um, February of this year through June of two thousand and twelve, for ten point five cents per kilowatt. And the amount there for the contract would be five hundred and ten thousand. Any other questions from the board on that?
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
Move the Board Select and Vote to Award Two Short-Term Contracts for the Supply of Electrical Energy to Municipal Facilities for the Periods of February two thousand and eleven through June two thousand and eleven, five months, and February two thousand and eleven through June two thousand and twelve, seventeen months, to Constellation New Energy of Baltimore, Maryland, subject to successful completion of contract negotiations.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Norton, discussion, Mr. Vignani.
Just one real quick question, there's a, are these supposed to be overlapped?
Yes, one is all, some accounts, and, one is all accounts, and then one is some accounts after the turbine comes online. We've already identified the accounts that will come on.
And just in case it wasn't picked up, I mean, I just want to congratulate, as the whole board would, I'm sure, Tricia and Al on working this through, because this, this net-net here is saving us six hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Any questions from the audience, otherwise? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, good. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten, which is a discussion vote, sewer betterment. I'm sorry, sewer rate increase. Now, it looks as though that, um, the town has, um, raised two point five percent. Or no, I take that back. You're looking, the town hasn't, the Sewer Enterprise Fund hasn't had a raise in its amounts in over seven years, correct?
Correct.
And that, um, had the town been doing this every year at two point five percent, this would have grown the town for the rate, basically, five hundred and ninety-four dollars. You're looking for an increase?
Of fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, which puts us with all the municipalities that you've listed, between Quincy, Cohasset, Hingham, Marshfield, Weymouth, Hall, Plymouth, and Bourne, we would be at five hundred dollars, uh, a rate per average user, as opposed to Quincy, which would be a thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine. We are at the bottom of that list. And they've continued to increase their rates, um, from two thousand and seven onward, all the way to more recently in two thousand and ten. So you're suggesting that we should raise it by fifty dollars?
Yes.
So now that the rate would be five hundred and fifty? Is there anything else, this would come from, as a part of the Enterprise Fund?
Right.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, I'd like to correct that slightly, the, what we're asking for is to raise the rates ten percent, which for our average user, who is a five hundred dollar a year user, that would increase them by fifty dollars.
So I take that back, the ten percent increase is what you're looking for?
Yes. And, as you pointed out, uh, the town has been able to maintain its sewer rates since two thousand and four. All of our coastal community neighbors have been increasing rates once per year. The other towns range from seven hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars per year, while we've been running around five hundred dollars per year for the average user. And would recommend that, uh, even with this increase, uh, what amounts to fifty dollars per year for the average user, we're, uh, well below, um, all other communities, to the extent that we're one-third the price of Quincy, and we're fifty percent less than, than the price of Bourne, which is the, the, the next highest customer sewer plant rather.
Questions from the board?
It's a conservative increase.
Even if we increase it ten percent, we'll still be thirty-three percent lower than the next highest-
Yes.
Person on your list here.
This only generates about eighty thousand more in revenue.
Only eighty thousand?
Yep.
So is this a series of ten percent increases?
No.
Yeah.
No?
But I would recommend, in the future, what we should do is, we should look at modest annual increases, because quite frankly, ten percent is a, it's, it's, it's a big sounding number, although it's only fifty dollars per family, average user. But probably what we should do is have a glide slope plan where we're constantly, since we do have to reinvest in this equipment, you know, it was all new, but it deteriorates, there's a need to reinvest in it. We have to cover the increasing cop, operating costs like chemicals, um, and there's, um, the debt service that we need to cover.
Any other questions? Questions for the audience, Mr. Paley?
When we first proposed sewer, we were told that the more people who came onto the system, the lower the rates would become, because more people would be, came into the operation of the sewer system. And as a result, the rates would go down. That's what we were told the town needed when the new sewer projects were first proposed, quite a few years ago. And now we seem to be doing what we do with, uh, all the fee increases. Instead of looking at the cost of our own operations, we're looking at what all the other towns do. And we go to see, well, we're below this town, but we're not above the next town, and we should be somewhere in the middle there. And we do it on that basis, rather than on the basis of what it takes to run our operation.
I, I-
Are we now, are we now at a point where we're going to say, with this next Green Bush, not the Green Bush, I'm sorry, the, uh, the Squash upon North Situate project, that bringing all those people onto the system won't reduce, but we'll actually, we're gonna look at increases now from now on?
No. Unless there's any other, so, otherwise I'd like to move on. No.
Just one quick comment, they just went over the whole sewer budget and said what a problem I and I is. You know, we're, we're processing four times as much water, and that's why we need to raise the fees. It has nothing to do with what we're doing.
It also gets into, what could, f, f, seven years ago, you know, with five hundred dollars and the value of five hundred dollars seven years later, there's a cost savings there, because we've maintained that for over seven years. Whereas other communities had, for whatever reason, they've increased it. So I mean, I mean, you know, it's apples and oranges. And that really gets us into a real long philosophical discussion about, you know, a whole bunch of- The long and sure of it is, no. I mean, if, if the price is the price, we certainly have been giving a low product for the town, and now the town is looking to re, recommend increasing it by ten percent, which is not an awful lot, given the, given the past seven years that it's main, been flat. It's been maintained, leveled for seven years. I can't say any of the, I can tell you right now, these other communities have changed it, you know, two thousand and ten, two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten, two thousand and ten. I'd be willing to bet that all these communities have also changed it a number of times in the past seven years. So, this is a comparison, we're not gearing our whole strategy based on surrounding communities. It just gives us an insight as to what other communities have been doing, and we've been providing a service at really a low rate, that's the reality of it. And those costs for providing it are going up. So I mean, again, I don't want to get into a long discussion on it, because it's nine twenty-five, and, but. So do I have a motion, do we go with a motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay, briefly, I don't want to, again, this is not gonna get into a, a big-
I just want to draw attention, I think your rhetoric is just absurd. You set this up, Norman, you said, in some sort of quote, and I'm paraphrasing, are we going to get ourselves locked into a situation where we're gonna only be benchmarking ourselves against other towns, instead of taking a hard look at our own operations and doing the best we can with our operations? Something along those lines. And you know that's just inaccurate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, if I can ask Ms. Donovan, did we get a motion on that, or did we get, no, we were discussing it, because Mr. Paley asked a question.
Move the Board Select and Vote to Increase Sewer Uses Rates by Ten Percent Effective February First, two thousand and eleven.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Moving, unanimous, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, obviously, it's an update on the storm. And, uh, thank you, Al. Are you here for anything else, or you're all? Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Um, I promised the board at the last meeting that we'd have costs update for the storm of December twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. As they seem to be pyramid-ing, we have to refer to them, I guess, by dates. What I gave you is the two sheets that Chief Judge, as the Emergency Management Director, submitted to MIMA for damage assessments for public assistance. That's town incurred costs for the storm. On the bottom of the first page, you'll see that that total is two million, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. What that includes, obviously, is some costs that, um, we won't incur right away, such as full replacement of the seawall, full replacement of, um, some equipment. And, so, what I just wanted to itemize is sort of what the town costs will be out of that five hundred thousand dollars that you voted to deficit spend. For MIMA, um, they were very anxious for us to get our number in, even though recognizing it was due last week and we were fighting another storm. So, the two point two six seven will be audited. Again, this is just the town-related costs. The property damage cost, Neil estimates at three point five million dollars, um, right now, based on the assessment of his reports. But I'll just highlight, our police and overtime costs were forty-five thousand, five hundred, roughly. DPW overtime costs alone, and that backs out materials, supplies, equipment, were ninety-three thousand. The shelter, two thousand, repair and cleanup of roads, thirty-one thousand. The seawall repair was forty-seven thousand. As you see to the right, the replacement cost there is estimated two million, which is driving that total cost, um, to MIMA. And, uh, building department for deputizing everybody was eighty-five hundred. Cedar Point is repaired to the, um, lighthouse. Some incidental costs that aren't on this is our conservation agent worked double hours for the past two weeks. He's on a contract basis, so that's another couple thousand that we're gonna incur out of that deficit. So right now, um, we're under, I think, around, I think, between two seventy-five and three hundred thousand on what that deficit you voted for two weeks ago. Mary is still processing some of the bills. I just pros, approved for payment today, all the private contractor bills that were clearing. So, while her numbers only show like fifty, sixty thousand expended, we're still processing, like the fire overtime and stuff of that is still not in. So, um, that's your storm update from the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. And I commend Chief Judge for pulling this all together to get it into MIMA. We already received an email from them saying they, they know, you know, it's not perfect, but they really appreciated the town's efforts to get it in in such a, a short timeframe.
Mr. Norton?
Just a question, is there any word on whether the state has reached its, uh, number?
No, because these were all due by all communities last Thursday.
We prob, we were probably the biggest contributor to that number, I would imagine, but maybe not.
Yes, um, probably for the public assistance piece, yeah.
Okay, that's, um, quite a number. So let's move on, any other discussion on storm update? Right out of it. Can we go to Agenda Item Number Twelve?
Yes.
Which is a charge on the Sister City program. And, just so I know, is this, this is the draft that we have? I assume, are we looking for a motion to vote to adopt it, this charge, right? Probably, we should have the clerk read it. It's okay.
In French?
Oui oui.
The Board of Selectmen shall establish and appoint, this is the Town of Situate Sister City Committee Charge. The Board of Selectmen shall establish and appoint a committee to be known as the Town of Situate Sister City Committee. The Sister City Committee will be composed of a minimum of five members, representing a cross-section of individuals, not only of the Town of Situate, but may have appointees from other communities as well. Committee members will serve for three years, three, three-year terms. Nope, stop that, three-year terms. Nothing herein shall limit the Board of Selectmen from appointing more than five members if it is deemed to be the town's best interest. The Board shall fill vacancies as they occur. The committee's initial duty shall be to develop and plan programs, activities, and events that foster greater friendship and understanding between the Town of Situate and Soucy-en-Brie, France, pursuant to the agreement intent executed by officials in November of two thousand and ten. The actual agreement between the two communities will be executed in March of two thousand and eleven. The committee shall endeavor to foster and enhance the goals of friendship and goodwill, and to collaborate with the city of Soucy-en-Brie for the mutual benefit of each community by exploring educational, economic, and cultural opportunities. The committee shall initiate, implement, and support opportunities for beneficial and practical exchanges in the areas of business, arts, culture, health, science, education, sports, tourism, any, any other manner, manner it deems helpful or educational to explore and create new exchange that result in a rewarding, long-lasting partnership with Soucy-en-Brie. That's a long sentence. The committee shall prepare a report for the annual town report, and will meet at least twice with the Board of Selectmen, noting its progress and any obstacles encountered. The committee shall be permitted to expend such sums raised through donations and other sources in accordance with all applicable town rules and regulations and established accounting procedures. All funds will remain within the custody of the town treasurer. The committee shall elect a chair, vice-chair, and clerk, and take minutes at meetings.
Discussion.
Like a motion, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Move the Board Selectmen Vote to Adopt the Sister City Charges Between the Town of Situate and Soucy-en-Brie, France.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye? Aye, unanimous. I was gonna say that, but I just didn't want to go there anymore. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, a vote drain laner, drain layer license renewals, um, from the DPW, and it appears to be that there are five, one, two, three, four, six, seven, seven applicants, please.
Move the Board of Selectmen Vote to Renew the Following Drain Layer's Licenses for Joseph Benomi Contractors, Inc., Iaria Brothers, Inc., Dogo Brothers, Beggerton Contracting, P.F. Spencer, Inc., Sporito Environmental Services, and Tottman Enterprises for the year two thousand and eleven. Second?
Seconded by Mr. Murray, discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving on to, um, Agenda Item Number Fourteen, annual license renewals.
Move the Board of Selectmen Vote to Renew the Two Thousand and Eleven Hawker Peddlers License for Great Cape Baking Company for the North Situate Farmers Market.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, it happens to be appointments.
Move the Board of Selectmen Vote to Appoint Matthew Brown and Gary Collo to the Three Hundred Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Celebration Committee.
May I modify that motion, Mr. Chair?
I think it should read, move the Board Selectmen Vote to Appoint Matthew Brown and Mary Kennedy Dean to the Three Hundred Seventy-Fifth.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're right.
Okay.
Gary's on it, right?
Gary's?
He's not, at this point.
He's not, but he just wants to participate, okay. So-
Strike mine and take ranks, we didn't have a second?
Second, second. Seconded by Mr. Vignani, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Good. Let me see here for a second, Sean, you can read the next one, that hasn't been changed.
Move the Board of Selectmen Vote to Appoint Patricia Jarquet, Betty Defanction, and Marie Flaherty to the Sister City Committee. Second?
Seconded by Mr. Murray, discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, that's good. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Sixteen, which is the Town Administrator's Report.
Quickly, um, we received bids for the cell tower that I opened, uh, a week ago Friday, and we did receive a bid from AT&amp;T. The board has to vote to award that bid. So before we go down this path and you sign on the dotted line, I just want to make sure, if you have any questions or concerns, I'm on the agenda for the school committee Monday night, just to see if they have any questions or concerns. I would love it if one of you could attend, um, and we'll go from there.
I'll try to, I'll try to be there.
The minimum bid specifications were twenty-four thousand a year, and they did that with an escalating amount, so, um, maybe sometime in FY twelve, we'll start to see that. I think you all received the email I sent relative to the issue of how the legacy funds for the school building projects of nine hundred and sixty thousand would be handled. And, um, the response that we received from the legal department supported and affirmed the guidance given by the town accountant three months ago, that that money needed to be reserved for debt. There's some remaining funds, I think, of about a hundred and seventy thousand that would be available for additional appropriation. I meant to check with Mary about the amount today, but, um-
Can we send, I should probably, we should probably send a letter over to the school committee, just-
I sent a copy of the DOR letter to Dr. Martin, Bill Johnston, and my case.
And maybe should we have- And maybe should we have a, plan a joint meeting between the two to follow up on that discussion?
For the, what purpose?
I guess only for the remaining, I thought we were going to have one follow, a follow-up on it. I mean, it is what it is, and that's one of the thoughts. I thought we were going to have maybe on the remaining one seventy-five. That would be the only thing, I guess maybe we could, I don't know, I just thought I'd throw it out there for the board to, you know.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
So I, maybe if we could, Kim, send a request over to, for a joint meeting and pick a date between now and maybe the next two weeks or three weeks. If we can pencil something in here would be great. Otherwise, we'll go over there, whatever's more convenient time-wise. Sorry, Tricia, I just cut you off.
No, you didn't, I'm fine. The last thing, I just want to take a moment, we're carrying a four percent cut in local aid. When we went over the budgets tonight, there were a couple of question areas where we just can't rely on like unemployment or workers' comp or veterans. Local aid, from hearing little machinations at the state level, given the fact that they don't have the stimulus money to plug of what that cut might be, a little concerned we might get cut a little more in local aid. We'll probably know Friday when the governor addresses the MMA convention. So I just provided a summary here, one percent additional reduction is another seventy percent. So if we go, I mean, seventy thousand dollars, so if we get a ten percent cut, we're going to have to carve out another three hundred thousand. I left three hundred thousand in free cash when I did the capital plan, we had six hundred plus. But again, if we have a snow deficit, that needs to be addressed with free cash and anything unforeseen. The FY twelve budget, again, like the FY eleven budget, was not balanced using any free cash. So that's why I left that cushion there just in case, but.
What about the, the storm, the two hundred and sixty-seven thousand?
I suspect, and it needs to come out of stabilization, that would be my recommendation, to have that money come out of stabilization at town meeting. That's what stabilization's for. If we had plenty of free cash, you know, we had the nine seventy-six or whatever, we could maybe split the baby and use some and some, but, you know, that's, that's a, that's the intended use of stabilization. We have it, we have two point one in stabilization. Would I like to replenish stabilization at some point, absolutely, but that's what I would recommend to the board to fund that two seventy-five one out of. So, so that's where we're at. I did attach, as you can see, when we talk about forecasting and how difficult it is to project, just, I did a quick query when I was doing your packet last Thursday of other towns in the area, all over the board, as far as what they're carrying for local aid. So there's no good number, there's no right number, there's no number to pick out of a hat. We had a four percent reduction last year. My prediction, and we can go back and look at the minutes, is that it might be a ten percent cut from the governor, but when the legislature is done going through the House and Senate and conference, it'll probably look like a four or five. But that's usually the case, but we'll see, because we don't know about state revenues and we don't know what the governor has.
Questions from the board? Tricia, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number seventeen, which happens to be correspondence. I do not see any. Might correct him, I didn't see, okay. And then moving on to agenda item number eighteen, which happens to be other business. Mr. Murray?
I actually do have one this week, Mr. Chair, and it's sort of directed to Tony as the school department liaison. We've been looking at a lot of these town budgets, and they're very clearly laid out. And I know the school department budget is also very clearly laid out, but it's often hard to track, at least for me, various expenditures and so on in their budget. And I was going to ask Tony if he thought it was appropriate if he could bring up to the school department if they could also give us a budget that pretty much breaks it down school by school in several broad categories, in the sense of administrators, number of administrators, numbers of teachers, support staff, and all that sort of stuff, just to sort of help me track along. I know, for example, Jenkins has, which is where, you know, my children are, Jenkins has six hundred students or four hundred students, some huge amount. And other schools have smaller amounts. And I completely understand that even if you have one student in one school, you still need a certain number of minimum people and so on. But I would just find it an additional way of additional information of, that I'd be able to look at and find interesting. Maybe you and I could talk about what some of the classifications could be, but again, not horribly detailed. I don't need to know how much each school is spending on crayons and, you know, reading aids and things like that. But just sort of like, this school has a principal and a vice-principal and these staff members, and that same school has this number of teachers in third grade and so on.
I'm sure they have something like that, Al.
Yeah, I just think it would be helpful to really start tracking where, where, where things are flowing through in addition to the larger sort of omnibus budget that they lay out to us.
When do they come before us?
Not for a while.
They're the last, like, end of February, I think.
Be like the, whatever, fourteen days.
I'd certainly like to have that, in that context.
Sure, I'll email Bill and Jamie.
If you think that's, I mean, if you think that would be helpful.
They have something like that, you know, it'd be good to have it for like the last three years. What did it look like two years ago, what did it look like one, you know, so you can really see what the changes have been.
I think their big budget book, not necessarily, you know, the synopsis that's presented here, but their big budget book, I believe, has all that information in it.
Yeah, okay, would be good to see.
It could be wrong, but I know, I know I've seen it.
You really only need personnel because that's eighty-five percent, yeah.
Exactly right. Thank you, that's it.
Tony?
Couple of quick things. At the risk of, actually, I know a ton of people have helped with this storm, but there's a couple of people that I just want to recognize that have gone above and beyond, not to say that other people haven't either, but I really want to acknowledge the Inn at Situate Harbor and all that they have done for people from the storm and their needs in terms of housing and food and shelter and, and all sorts of things. They have gone above and beyond, and it really is, makes me proud to live in the town and see the generosity of a lot of people. And I'm sure all of you guys know one or two other people that you can mention, but this is one that has really stood out to me, the Knights of Columbus, Situate Little League, a lot of these other organizations have, have participated as well. But the Inn has really, really, really been extremely generous through this. On that note further, there was a fundraiser held on Saturday night for the, for the storm people that are in need. And it was the most crowded I've ever seen the Barker Tavern. People were parking at Pier Forty-four, and they had a comedy show, and it was, you know, Chief Judge and Elena and a bunch of people there were helped running, it, the Malones, I can't, I know I'm leaving a bunch of people out, but it was just a well-attended event, and it, it was a great thing to see again, the community coming together. On a lighter note, my sports update, Little League registration is this Saturday. This is the last time to register your child for Little League without getting a late fee, and it is from nine thirty to twelve at the Knights of Columbus. And lastly, go watch a local basketball game. The, the girls' team and the boys' team are doing great, and the schedules are at the high school. I think they're on the website, and it's really, really good entertainment.
Girls lost their first game the other night.
They were undefeated in the first game the other night, so that's it.
Mr. Harris?
Not tonight.
No, it's not. Nope. I don't either, so I'll move on to the next one, which happens to be the minutes.
The minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand and ten.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Norton, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye, abstain, since I wasn't present.
Go ahead.
Finally move the minutes of January fourth, two thousand and eleven.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Vignani, discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye? Very good, that's unanimous. That moves us on to the final, which is the adjournment. Moved by Mr. Norton, seconded by Mr. Vignani, all in favor? Aye? Thank you very much, folks, have a good night. Thank you, John.